It was nice.
Good evening. We'll call the Stevens Point area Public School District Regular School Board Meeting for Monday, January 13th, 2014 to order. Barb, roll call vote please in verification of quorum.
Mr. Evil?
Here.
Ms. Faxon?
Here.
Mr. Larson?
Here.
Mitch Presley?
Here.
Ms. Scott?
Here.
Ms. Shively?
Here.
Ms. Sheeran?
Here.
Ms. Totten?
Here.
Item three, approval of the agenda. We have had a request from Lisa to vote separately on items under the consent agenda, eight A, B, and D, and also under nine C two, the compensation reports recommendations to vote on the exempt versus non-exempt recommendations separately. Are there any other changes to the agenda?
I guess my only, I don't know if I could do that, but for that item that you just mentioned, Mr. Rothman, my request would be for information only this evening. I did request some information, which Dr. Winiger did provide to the board, but it was done late in the day, so I'm requesting that if that could be moved to an information-only item and we could bring it back at the, we could discuss it tonight and then bring it back at our next January meeting.
C two, nine C two?
The compensation, yes.
I was wondering if we could, is that what, I mean, are we getting a presentation on this? Because otherwise, we could just table it and have the discussion and everything the same night we vote.
I would have more questions, so I would like to have the discussion.
Oh, okay.
I just don't want to have to make a decision tonight because, Mr. Rothman, I'd asked you at the workshop, and that was for information only as well, and you said we'd be able to discuss it tonight, so I'd like to be able to discuss it tonight and then take action next meeting.
That's the wish of the board?
Sure, that's fine.
Does that do anything internally?
No, it just, no, it would just postpone the forming of the committee and doing the pay plan and that kind of thing, so.
All right, so we have the added request. Well, then, Lisa, we really don't need to vote on exempt versus non-exempt separately. We'll, this will be information only?
Well, but it still needs to be.
For the next meeting is what you're asking.
Okay, right.
Yeah. It still needs to be discussed separate, yes.
So where are we, are we tabling this to the next meeting? What are we doing?
We're just doing it for information, okay.
We're going to discuss it tonight for information only, and then it'll be brought back for action at our meeting on the 27th. Any other changes, recommended changes to the agenda? All right, hearing none. Can we have a roll call vote on the agenda as amended, please?
You don't have any motion.
Oh, I'm sorry.
You have to approve the amended agenda.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Fine.
Mr. Evil?
Yes.
Ms. Faxon?
Yes.
Mr. Larson?
Yes.
Mr. Presley?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Shively?
Yes.
Ms. Sheeran?
Yes.
Ms. Totten?
Yes.
Moving on to the Pledge of Allegiance, and with us tonight, we have students from Washington Elementary.
(audience) Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good job.
You did a great job just standing still. Okay, so this evening for Washington Elementary, Mrs. Faxon, who's our board vice president, is going to hand you certificates, Chloe Carvall, Cameron Mikecny, Evan Nacker, Megan DeBeau, and Gwynn Beaversburg. Okay, so if you want to hold those up and face them that way, and Mr. Brownson's going to take a picture, you'll go online. Great, now let's start down there and introduce your parents.
My parents are Jackie and Brooke.
And they are here, right there. Come on in, come on in, come on in. That's good, that's good. Jackie, good to see you, okay?
My parents are Christine and Paula.
They're not here, okay?
My parent here is Cassandra Oble.
Where's Cassandra there? Welcome, Cassandra.
Kelly and Jared Mikecny. Kelly's here.
Where's Kelly? There we go, hey Kelly?
I'm Michelle and Michael DeBeau. Michelle's here.
Michelle, welcome. Thank you very much, parents, for what you do for our students, very, very much. So let's give it up for our Washington Elementary.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Nice job. Thank you very much. Good job. Thank you. Good job. Thank you very much.
Good job.
Thank you.
Good job.
Thank you. Thank you, good job. Thank you.
So the other recognition that we have this evening is one that we've begun a few months ago, and it's as a student from a school recognizing a teacher that has made a powerful impact on his or her life. So if I could have Emma come to, Jimmy, come to the front here, Emma. Emma's a student at PJ Jacobs, and Emma's going to recognize Paula Summers. Is Paula with us this evening? Paula, come on down. This is a good thing, Paula.
Yeah, I know.
Is this a surprise?
Yes.
It was meant to be. So every month we have this, and Emma has something to read, Paula.
I'm always a little apprehensive when I meet a new teacher. When I meet, when I met Mrs. Summers, I was a little scared because she has a little bit of an urban legend of having a reputation of being a really hard teacher. After being here today, I realized that she's tough because she cares about what we learn, and she expects us to focus on our learning. She has high expectations for her students, but is willing to help you reach them if you take the first step. Mrs. Summers can keep a class under control by engaging us in discussion. Because of that, I knew that if I went into her class, that I would learn something, not just experience the big waste of time. Most of the stuff that she taught us is still very helpful. For example, she learned the entire first quarter teaching us grammar, which is now extremely helpful, especially with our DOLs you have in ninth grade. And then she also taught us how to make an outline, which is really helpful for making speeches that we have to do. I still have a packet from that and keep on a refreshment. Mrs. Summers made us all, she's a group, books to reading groups, and she assigned us these Lord of the Plugs. At first, I did not like this story at all. I went home and complained to my parents because I just did, I did not like the story. But through the group discussions and long sheets and all the different work that we did about our books, I grew to find that I loved this book, and it's now in my favorite novel story. In their class, I became a better writer because she gave me the tough feedback that I needed on my work, and she was a trigger for everything. She so enjoyed writing more because, I also enjoy writing more because we were able to read about, write about books that we read in class. I have many good teachers at PJ Jacobs, but Mrs. Summers was one of my favorites, because she had great teaching methods that worked for me. I learned a lot in her class, and because it was evident that she cared a lot about me and my education.
Certificate, which is signed by Emma and myself, and it reads, "This certificate has worked as Paula Summers' English teacher. The student-staff recognition is presented to you for the positive and lasting impact you've made on my fellow students and me. We are a family of teachers and learners. You have taught me and many others the essentials of how to learn, the values, how to live a good life, and how I might pay it forward. heartfelt thanks and gratitude." Congratulations.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I have to say, it was easy with somebody who was very acquisitive and determined. It was an easy job.
All right, so we're going to get a couple of photographs. Great, and Paula, you want to, and Emma, you want to?
Sure. We're going to do her parents.
Oh, I'm sorry, are your parents here, Paula? Emma?
My mom is back there. Katie, Jory.
Katie, thank you for coming. I appreciate it very much. And I'm going to ask if I can have that, because we're keeping a record of all the student testimonials. You all okay? Surprise, surprise. All right, so the board members would like to meet you now.
Awesome job. You did a wonderful job. Thank you for what you do. Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Thank you for, Emma?
Eva?
That was great. Congratulations, nice job.
Thanks.
Congratulations. That was an awesome job. Sometimes surprises are good.
You had such a nice time.
Yes.
Student staff, all right, tell the donations, and I'll go back and introduce the school board.
Okay, donations. Bannock Elementary received a 500 grant from ExxonMobil to be used in the maintenance support of math and/or science. Bannock Elementary received $250 from Team Sherrill as a result of student Lily Wilfert's winning their holiday coloring contest. The Boston School Forest received a $200 donation from Washington School PTO in support of school forest programs. The Stevens Point School Area Public School District received a $50 donation from Sherrill Incorporated to be used in the Palm program. And Jerry Gargalak, our principal of our Alternative Learning Center, received a $100 donation today from a community member who wishes to be anonymous. This donation was made in memory of Mr. William Mansky. The donor has asked that the money be donated to the Fernandez Center woodshop account. The district very much appreciates contributions from the community.
Thank you. And then to complete the community partnership and recognition, I'm going to take just a minute and introduce the candidates for the school board election this April. There are eight people vying for four seats, and they are Alex Kokonowski, and I know, I had an email earlier today, he will be joining us a bit later, Sam Levin, just raise a hand, thank you, Sam, Jeff Presley, an incumbent, Bob Larson, an incumbent, Chris Scott, an incumbent also, Terry Fink, there's Terry, thank you, Trish Baker, Trish, I saw you, there you go, and then lastly, Patricia Hetzel. Patricia, thank you. Those are your candidates for school board election this April. Moving on to agenda item six, public comments, which tonight will be limited to three minutes. We have three people speaking, and in the order that they signed up, Albert Racco, followed by Reed Rocheloo, and thirdly, it'll be Tiffany Reindl. Albert?
I'm Albert Racco, 1824 Gilke Street. Over the last few months, you school board members have taken a few actions that deal positively with the morale of your employees. You previously recognized that morale was low among them. You received a five-page memo on August 26th, 2013, subject Draft Framework for District Staff Morale. Looks like this. On November 25th, you revised the retirement open window option. The vote was unanimous. Also, on November 25th, you voted to accept the plan for second semester of 2013-2014 at SPAS. That was a five-in-one plan. The vote was unanimous. By a second motion, on the same day, you voted to implement the SPAS plan for 2014-2015. That vote was also unanimous. At the December 16th board meeting, Mr. Larson spoke twice in favor of raises for staff members over several other perceived, perceived needs, saying staff members had not received a raise in four years. Thank you for the opportunity to address the board.
Thank you, Albert. Reed?
Headlines in the Friday, January 10th paper, hope you read it, says, "A Panel Approves Life Skills Center." I don't know if some of those board members were there. I wouldn't put a lot of confidence in that vote. It was the plant commission with only four members, three members were missing, and it was controlled by the mayor as usual, and, which is probably against, it is against Robert Zusa's order for a chairman to continually control a meeting like that, and Tony Patton was the only alderman on that committee, and he always votes with the mayor. So your concern would be what's going to happen at the council. Now, and they never considered a utility plan, where you're going to hook up. I checked, and they estimated there's no utilities out in that street, way on the other side of North Point Drive, you'd have to blast and close off North Point Drive, $20,000 to $30,000, that's what the utility department estimated could run you for sewer and water. You don't have any, they never considered a snow storage plan, which I'm sure the council will, or a drainage plan. You're storing your snow right on the site, and that's where your drains are. Karen, and the 300, and the legal challenge to your interpretation of the 300-foot from a tavern, I'm sure that's going to come up. In addition, Karen Eversen, the lady who brings her child with a wheelchair, she even mentioned that, why are you adding all these additional uses in a building, what, you have 300 foot, 1,500 foot, 1,500 feet less square foot? Something doesn't make any sense. Plant commission is requiring an institutional look, by the way, and I'm sure the council's going to uphold that. In other words, it looks like a residential building, and they're not going to accept that, even that building. And that could cost you, if it's going to have to look like SPAS, it could cost you a lot of money. And Winiger tried to claim it wasn't in front, and it's way out in front. You know, it's, one time it's in front, next time it isn't, and so that's going to be a problem. It is in front, it's got a residential look, it's supposed to look like it's going to cost you a lot of money. And then Mr. Neon came, and he said, he contradicted his boss, he said he didn't care what it looked like, he didn't think it would run the cost up. I think it's going to run the costs up. And then you guys improperly submitted a new plan right before the meeting, flipping the building around, so one doesn't know what committees, what you guys plan on doing. And that was Mr. Winiger, because Samuels didn't even agree with Mr. Winiger's plan. And you better get cost additional before you continue. In addition, I called the state of Wisconsin regarding this charter school, and here's a name and a number you better put down, Valerie Schmitz, 608-267-9111, okay? She heads the program. And I told her about how you guys weren't making this thing public, and we had a lot of talks, she's called me back, the phone went dead.
Three minutes is up, thank you, sir. We appreciate it.
You're lucky, you only made it three minutes.
Tiffany?
If I could tell you a lot.
Tiffany Reindl, you're up next.
Terry, can I just ask him a question?
Go.
The phone number again, you rattled it off so fast, Reed.
Valerie Schmitz, 608-267-9111, she's ahead of the program, and she would come here, and she'd give you the straight answers, she's got some real concerns, and you're on the radar.
Okay, thank you, I don't want to get you in trouble. Thank you, Reed.
Okay, thanks, Tiffany. All right, moving on, presentations, student senate report, Ashley St. Aubin Clark.
This week is finals week at SPAS. Odd classes will have their finals on Thursday, evens classes on Friday, their 70-minute finals. SPAS is hosting the Martin Luther King Junior Celebration put on by the Justice Works. The SPAS choir will be performing, it's on January 20th at 7:20 in the auditorium and is open to the public. The SPAS musical is just around the corner, Thursday, January 30th at 7:00 PM. It's also on Friday and Saturday at 7:00 PM and 1:00 PM on Saturday also. It is Bye Bye Birdie this year. The SPAS student senate hosted the Wisconsin Association of School Council's Leadership Camp reunion this Saturday at Ben Franklin, and it went extremely well, so, thank you.
Thanks, Ashley. Board member comments, Angel.
Actually, I'll just take a second and introduce Alex, I see him standing in the back.
Oh, Alex is here. Alex, we just announced a few minutes ago, the candidates for the spring election, so welcome. Bob?
Yep, same thing I talked about four weeks ago, regarding the Jackson Middle School Expeditionary Learning, and the reasons why I would not support the opening of the Jackson School and not signing a five-year contract with the governance board. Number one, we don't have the money to sustain the opening of Jackson School. Number two, I believe upgrading our school security to give our employees and students greater safety takes priority over the Jackson School. And the school board has spent time and money on four studies. A task force will look at all these studies and make recommendations to the board. These recommendations will come in the spring of 2014. And here's an example why it's necessary for the board to wait until this task force makes recommendations to the board. The numbers I'm going to present now are not my numbers, but numbers from the facility study and third Friday enrollment count dated September 20th, 2013. Ben Franklin working capacity at 100%. I gave you guys 80 and 90, that didn't have much of an impact, so I'm going to do the 100%. 1,632 students. Currently, there are 775 students at Ben Franklin. This means there are 857 open seats available at Ben Franklin, and it's only operating at 47% capacity. PJ Jacobs working capacity at 100% is 1,370 students. Currently, there are 748 students at PJ Jacobs. This means there are 622 open seats available at PJ Jacobs, and it's operating at only 55% capacity. The Stevens Point School District working capacity at 100% is 9,696 students. Currently, there are 6,730 students seated in our schools. This means there are 2,966 open seats in the Stevens Point School District, and our district is operating at only 69% capacity. How can we justify opening Jackson School? A recent poll taken by the Stevens Point Journal dated 12/16 shows 58% of the people responding to the poll said do not open Jackson School, and I believe the count was 724 people that voted. Once we sign the contract, we are locked in for five years. There was a recommendation last December 9th, 2013 board meeting. The recommendation vote on District Jackson, on the District Jackson Middle School Expeditionary Learning Governance Board contract no later than Monday, January 27th, 2014, and by a five-to-four vote, that motion was defeated. I asked the superintendent two questions. Has the paperwork been submitted and approved by DPI, state of Wisconsin, for the following grants? The answer, the initial planning grant for $225,000 was submitted and approved by the board and DPI. We have begun using those funds to plan for the charter school. The 2014-15, 2015-16, and 2016-17, there's been no paperwork submitted. The state of Wisconsin hasn't even submitted paperwork, so all these numbers that we're looking at, there's no trail of paperwork or any approval from the state or from the federal government. Have the dollars, okay, I won't even bother to talk about that, but we got a letter from the request that I made from the superintendent, and then the letter was, a letter from Tony Evers, our state superintendent, and I want to read something that was in this letter. "I'm pleased to inform you that an expert peer-reviewed panel evaluated the 2013-14 charter school planning grant applications, and your proposal for the Stevens Point Expeditionary Learning School was approved for funding in the amount of $225,000 for the projected period." This is interesting, August 1st, 2013 through July 31st, 2014. What that's telling me is we have a whole year to do planning. We should not be voting on this until the task force comes back with the recommendations. We've got through July 31st, there should be no rush on voting on this thing when it could have major impact when that task force comes back with their studies. I looked at the video from comments in the 11/25 board meeting, professional development will take a huge chunk of the grant money. We do not, we don't know where the kids will come from. There's so many vague ifs in there, and I've got one question that I would like answered whenever this thing comes up. One of the things that was mentioned was, the grant money is now allowed to pay for wages and benefits. So then how can we pay for substitute teachers with that grant money? So anyway, I just want to bring this up because I keep hearing rumors this thing is coming back, and based on a letter from the superintendent of the state of Wisconsin saying we've got till July 31st, why would we want to lock ourselves in for a five-year contract until the task force comes back with recommendations? There is no rush. Thank you.
Jeff Presley.
No, I'm coming.
Chris, Scott?
I just wanted to mention to the board, I don't know if everyone got an invitation to Martin Machining, I did and was able to attend today, and I found it extremely interesting, exciting, and I was very, very pleased to see some of the innovative technology that's being used, some of the students from youth options that were there. I have to say, I was so surprised, I had no idea that there was a company like this in Stevens Point, and I really wanted to thank Alan for showing me through the building all of the different areas that this company supplies, companies all over the world, and we, he has students that are being tutored, and it's just a wonderful opportunity. So I hope board members will be able to attend. I'm hoping some administration's able to attend and see what goes on there, because it's very, very exciting, and I think it really promotes what we're looking for, and that's innovative challenges for our students. So it was very, very, just a wonderful experience.
Thank you, Chris. Brenna?
Thank you. I wanted to thank the board members for their service on the board. It's been a pretty challenging year. The board has been a pretty easy place to take potshots, from what I've read in the newspaper and what I've seen, and I wanted to thank the people that have decided to step up and run for office. I've really enjoyed the eight years that I have been on this board. It's been really challenging work, and I think we've done a lot of really good things. Education is really critical to our community, and it's really the success of our students that needs to be at the heart of all the decisions that we make as a board. And we've had numerous challenges, financial, leadership challenges, staffing challenges, and yet every year, school starts, and every year, students graduate. I think we have a really good school system, and I think this last year's been challenging. I want to thank you tonight for your willingness to amend the agenda, to give us more time to discuss the compensation model, and to have it for information only, so we're not forcing a decision, and so we can look at the reports, and I really appreciate board members thinking about that request and going along with that. I think if we can pull together and really try to be open-minded and listen to each other, I think it sets a good example for our students, as well as it's much more fun to be a part of the meetings when it's positive. I know we all have very different reasons for running sometimes, although I think we all do care about our district as well as the students, but we all have different passions and things that are important to us. I really hope that we can listen to what those are and really try to find ways to work together and pull together. I haven't been able to be at some of the meetings, and I've tried to do it via phone. The meetings have really been long, and I know that we're going to talk about that this evening. I'd encourage us to think about, even if it's midterm, of maybe going to committees on a few of the topics, so we could have the information. I'd really encourage us to make sure that the board workshop in January that's scheduled takes place. I was so disappointed to think that we all could have made the December meeting, and then we had to cancel it because it wasn't posted correctly. So I really hope that we can make that happen, because I think if we can sit down and look eyeball to eyeball, and really try to listen to what's important to each one of us, that we can really move this district ahead. When I, I went back through some meetings, and one of the questions I had for Dr. Winiger, which I just still, maybe I missed it, but I still can't understand school perceptions, that's kind of been Bill Foster. I was familiar with his work a number of years ago, through my work with WASB, and then also going to the educational conventions. And so I asked if the board could do the board evaluation, which we did, and we did talk about it, and at the September 23rd meeting, we talked about a number of things. Dr. Winiger had a lot of comments. which I just still, maybe I missed it, but I still can't understand school perceptions. That's kind of been Bill Foster. I was familiar with his work a number of years ago through my work with WASB, and then also going to the educational conventions. And so I asked if the board could do the board evaluation, which we did, and we did talk about it. And at the September 23rd meeting, we talked about a number of things. Dr. Winiger had a lot of comments about it, and a lot of it was directed at us, and we're working on that. We had at another meeting, I believe we talked about, I couldn't find in the meeting minutes or whatever, but I know we were, we decided to go ahead with a graduation task, a graduation survey. So each one of our students that graduate would fill out a survey, so we'd get information back to see what was meaningful, what do you wish they would have covered more of, what are you doing, those kinds of things. So that's going forward. But I have to say, as a board member, I was surprised to learn that we have a staff survey that's starting, I think, tomorrow. And then we have a community survey, or a parent survey that's starting later. And one of the things that Bill Foster talked about in September when he was here, that you really wanted to be careful about what your purpose was for the survey, and you wanted to make sure that you knew what you were measuring. And I don't know if I'm the only board member, but I didn't realize we were having that survey, and that it was being done. And when I asked for a copy of the survey, I was told I would see it when it was sent out to staff. So I'm just a little concerned that we have had some discussions at a level that didn't involve the board, that's investing some money and some time, and we don't really know what the purpose is or what's happening. And when I look back at the board meeting, we had the morale plan, which Mr. Rackel mentioned, and he was so kind to mention positive things that we've done. It was kind of really music to my ears to hear that, because we have done a lot of positive things. But he mentioned that we talked about the morale plan, and we talked about that way back in August. And then it's come back to the board another time, and I know Angel had brought it forward, wanting it on the agenda. But you know what? This year's going to be over, and it's not slated to talk about it again until February. So I hope when we have our board workshop, that we can pull together, and when one of us asks for information, that it's not pushed aside or that we're belittled for asking for information, because each one of us took that bold step of putting ourselves out there, asking for people's votes and their support. And each one of us in these chairs has a voice and a vote. And I'd really like to see what happened earlier in the meeting tonight, where when someone made a request, it was listened to and honored, and we can find ways to meet each other. Because I think if we do, we will really be able to work together well and move this district forward, and that we can really show our students that they can be proud of the Board of Education as well as their school district. So thank you for listening.
Thank you, Renee. Kim?
Well, first, I want to agree with Bob, you know, about, you know, we need to wait for these studies to come back, not only with the charter, but I've been preaching that about the Life Skill Center and that technology. We have to wait for these studies to come back before we move any further. I mean, thank God, right now, the Life Skill Center's kind of put on hold due to the weather, but we do have time to stop that and relook at it. I'm not against the whole project, I'm just against, I guess, the misinformation and how we're getting there. My other thing is I have a question, and it's kind of a little late, but I want to know. With the closing of the school on Monday and Tuesday of last week, we spend hours writing policies, and I'm not sure who approved the change on the Board Policy 723.3, Emergency School Closings. I don't know if someone can answer that for me today. Many of our employees are now in a difficult spot, either trying to make up their time or using their time off to make it up. I mean, some people just don't have enough vacation to use their time off. The decision was not in their hands, and it was not even in the board's. We put that policy in place to protect us. It's not there anymore. Someone removed it without our permission. And to me, my question, my other second question is, is why does our administration think that they can change the work of the board again? Leaving on a positive note, I hope, as we celebrate our district's students, I would like to announce or do a kudos on a 2008 graduate, that happens to be my son, Andrew. Andrew graduated from SPAS, also from UW Oshkosh in 2012, with a BS in Kinesiology, not an easy word to say, with an emphasis on strength and conditioning. He has interned and worked in the field, such as athletics, athletics performance in Arizona, working with professional athletes, such as Shane Aliva, Christian Ponder, Nick Perry, Matt Kemp, Jacoby Elsnerby, Elsnerby, and James Hairston Jr., which that's a name we probably all know because he played for the Brewers. Had an awesome time down there. Went to Montana University for a while, his emphasis in football, but also got to work with the track and field and men's and women's basketball. But to toot his horn, he recently landed in North Dakota State University as a strength and conditioning intern coach, and helped them win their third FSC Conference Championship, which was aired on ESPN2 on January 4th. If you watched, you've seen him three times, so. I've got it on my TV. We taped it. And as I was talking to him, he came home this weekend, he stresses how important it is to make sure athletes eat proper nutrition from foods first, protein, carbs, and yes, fat. Then we teach them how to use supplements, so they don't waste time or money, and what supplements to use. Not all supplements are safe. 25% of the supplements on the shelf have ingredients in them that are not included in the label, and could, and also in them are recreational drugs, two steroids. So you have to watch out what you have to, so he does a lot of research in it. He also wants to let us know, to the athletic director, Ms. Hausler, and the football coach, McAdams, he is willing to come back to his hometown if a position ever opens up, to help our athletes to be the best that they can be. So, thank you.
Terrific. Is there any chance we can get you to market his services and skills to the Packers to work with their conditioning on defense?
He's not a miracle worker, but I will work on that one.
All right. Thank you. Lisa?
I want to review something that took place at our December 9th meeting, when it came to having monthly reviews with our superintendent, Attila Winiger. The superintendent claimed it would be unfair to treat him differently than other employees by opening continual evaluations. So are you telling me when employee does an exceptional job, we do not acknowledge that behavior? Or when one of the district's employees does not perform in a way in which they are expected, we do nothing? I hardly find this appropriate or believable. In fact, I know this to be a complete untruth. In just one of what I believe is an example of Attila Winiger's recent improper behaviors, he decided without school board approval to change the board-approved handbook regarding emergency school closings. The district was closed due to the cold weather, which was within its jurisdiction to do. It, however, was not in his jurisdiction to remove option one for staff, allowing them to be present at work and be paid as a normal workday. The board, staff, and administration have spent many hours creating our employee handbook, and yet, our superintendent believes he has the authority to change whatever, whenever he chooses. I can't wait to see what ramifications, including potential grievances, there are going to be for this one. It is unacceptable to allow our superintendent to put us in these types of situations. And I hear that if he was only protecting staff, what about our custodial staff that still went to work? What does that say about the other employers located in this district and how they feel about their employees? I do not recall hearing that the paper mills, Sentry, Travel Guard, McDonald's, any of those closed. In my view, the single most significant problem within this district could have been removed earlier this year. Instead, Superintendent Attila Winiger was given an extension with a 5-4 vote. The majority of our board decided against removal, and now we have decided against discussions pertaining to the superintendent's performance. If our superintendent has nothing to hide and has nothing that needs to be fixed, what is he afraid of? So because our superintendent doesn't believe we, as a board, have a right to evaluate him other than add his annual review, we shouldn't do it? That being said, I come to only one conclusion. The majority of this Board of Individuals has no desire to change how this board operates and approves of how our district is being run. This is sad and unacceptable for our district. The superintendent's improper behaviors need to be addressed immediately by this board. On an unrelated topic, the way our custodial representative was treated at our December 16th meeting by a couple of the board members was unacceptable. The staff member presented himself professionally, offering answers to our questions, and was treated as the enemy. And some of us wonder why our staff and public do not feel welcome to come before this board.
Jeff, Ebel?
Yes, I would like to thank all of those brave members of our community who have shown interest in our school district and stepped up to be candidates this year. So thank you very much.
All right. Moving on, we have no WASB update. I've been, as, you know, with Renee's absence, I've been passing things through as they come along. We do have some WASB considerations later in our agenda with the upcoming delegate assembly, and we'll talk about those at that time. Item 70, the superintendent's report, please.
Thanks, Terry. I just want to do, want to make one more recognition. I apologize, I didn't mention this earlier in the meeting. Congratulations to 2011 SPAS graduate and alumnus, Lucas Skiba. Lucas and his teammates at the University of Wisconsin Whitewater won another NCAA Division III National Title in football. Lucas was the starting right guard for his team, and was also the only UW Whitewater lineman to earn First Team All-WIAC and HM All-American. As a veteran on the O-line, Skiba led a young unit that protected the quarterbacks, allowing 20 sacks in 15 games. UW Whitewater averaged 4.2 yards per rush, and total 21 rushing touchdowns this season to go along with 42 scores through the air. Skiba was named First Team All-Region and First Team All-WIAC this season. Congratulations to Lucas Skiba. A short superintendent's report attached to it, you'll find an update of the communications plan. We continue to implement the plan and make revisions as needed. There is an update about the Plover Whiting addition and where we're headed with that. There are some bullet points which can be seen. The Life Skill Center, I think everybody knows that the Plan Commission approved it unanimously, and now it moves on to the Common Council on Tuesday, January 20th. Skyward has launched a new family access in the fall of 2013. Some schools have already adopted it. We will be piloting it second semester with volunteer parents and staff. The new one is Facebook-like, and districts that are using it are highly complimentary of it. And for all Skyward users, Skyward will turn off the old family access and only offer the new one beginning the end of June 2014. And at that time, we'll notify parents of the change. Staff and parent surveys have been mentioned a couple of times. Individual school staff surveys will be administered tomorrow, and staff will have until January 24th to complete and submit them. Individual school-parent surveys will be administered beginning January 20th. Once the results have been received from school perceptions, they will be shared with parents, staff, cabinet, and the board. The reason that we did the surveys, I did notify the board of the purpose of them, it's actually to help individual schools and school leaders put their finger on the pulse relative to the climate and the communication and some other factors related to the operation of the school. The intention there was to give them some really good information from both parents and staff. And then in the spring, which was a follow-up to the conversation that the board did have in the fall, we're going to have a district survey, which will get at the same kinds of things, but from a district viewpoint. And then there are some employee groups that we were not able to include in the current staff surveys that are not assigned to individual schools, and we'll be conducting surveys of those folks as well. So we did listen very carefully to the board discussion about that and thought that it actually was a pretty good idea to do those. The graduation, oh, I was asked also about the cost of the survey, the technology survey that we did, that Brian has as part of the agenda item, and that, the cost of that survey was $1,500. I'm checking with Mike Devine, the principal of SPAS, regarding the graduation survey and seeing how that's coming. I didn't have a chance to communicate with Mike. And the other item I wanted to address was the one that Kim raised about the emergency school closings. That policy is there. We didn't violate it. I just read it. And we followed the employee handbook. The handbook outlines very specific procedures. And as to why we didn't permit option one, I met with cabinet. Terry was part of that meeting, because I invited him in because of the situation with the weather. And we were very concerned about people driving to school. We don't have a covered lot for any of our schools, and we were very concerned that people would come to school, would park, would be there for six, eight hours, and then the cars wouldn't start, and then unable to get home or have an emergency. And we felt very concerned that our employees would be at risk. It is very typical for school districts to have custodial and maintenance staff on duty during inclement weather, specifically to make sure their buildings are maintained. That's not unusual. And so that's just a brief explanation about those issues that were raised. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving...
Excuse me, can I ask some questions?
Sure.
Okay. First of all, as long as you just brought up the school closing, and I know you were talking to Kim, but the policy, the emergency school closing policy was copied, pasted into the email you sent to staff, if I'm reading the email correctly, with you removing option one, so you did not follow policy.
That's not in, I'm sorry, Lisa, that was not policy. That was from the employee handbook.
When the board approves employee handbook, that we have spent an enormous amount of time trying to accommodate everybody. I believe that when you don't follow it, you cause unnecessary chaos. There was no reason for it. Again, we didn't close the mill, we didn't close McDonald's, we didn't close Sentry. So I find it inappropriate.
Can I just respond? May I respond to that, Mr. President? I understand, I do, and I understand your rationale. I think that in exceptional circumstances, there are exceptions that have to be made. And as the superintendent of the district, I felt it was necessary to make that exception to protect our employees as well as our students. My rationale was one of safety and one of concern for them if they were in a school building or in an office, and they couldn't get their car started and no one was there to assist them. So, but I do, I do understand your rationale.
And all due respect, we, our staff, they're professionals, they're adults, they, you know, we went through this when we had our HR committees, and we talked about school emergencies and stuff. So all of this was addressed, so, yeah. Okay, now, Life Skill Center. In your report, you said that there were some modifications that needed to be made. Will we be told about what exactly those modifications are?
We certainly can do that once the Common Council approves it. I can send to you the report from the Plan Commission that was approved.
That would be great.
Sure. Be glad to do that.
The other thing is, I, like Renee, don't remember. I remember us discussing the surveys, but I do not remember actually, like, deciding to redo the technology survey, what all, I thought we were going to be discussing this. I thought school perceptions were going to create a proposal to us that was going to come back, and maybe I'm just missing things. But can you tell me when that was board-approved, so that I can go back and look at?
It wasn't board-approved, Lisa, and there are things that don't come to the board for approval, and that's one of them. We, as an administration, in operating the district, develop ways in which we acquire information, and we didn't feel a need to seek board approval for that. Certainly, the cost of it wasn't something that was within board policy guidelines. I would, our own feeling was, is that actually the board, and certainly the community, parents and staff, would be appreciative of the fact that we took this step to try to solicit information, so that we could find out from our staff and parents, and then ultimately our community, about ways in which we could improve the district and ways in which we are actually a very good district, as Renee pointed out earlier, that there are some good things happening in the district. So I'm a little bit befuddled by the, by trying to figure out maybe what it is that is the concern, because we're actually doing something very proactive here.
Oh, I couldn't agree more.
And the results will come back.
Right. No, no, that isn't the, the issue for me with, most of the issues are the lack of following procedure, lack of following what I interpret as what's going to happen. It came to the board for us to discuss whether or not we wanted to do it or not, and, you know, we had the conversation. So when it comes before the board as information, and then the board says, we want this to happen, and then that doesn't happen, something happens in between there where it doesn't come back and we don't hear about it again, and it's very disconcerting for me. come back and we don't hear about it again, and it's very disconcerting for me.
Well, what the board wanted done was a graduation survey, and as I mentioned, I haven't had a chance to connect with Mike Devine, which I'll follow up on, which, where are we with the graduate survey? The other issue, though, there was no green light, red light, yellow light concerning a parent or staff survey. It was very clear from the conversation that Renee, in particular, wanted a district survey, and my comments were very specific about, we had to make sure we had a purpose, we had to make sure that it was developed well so that it wasn't skewed, that it didn't have an agenda to it, but that it was a survey that really was going to reap the information that we wanted to have. So the graduation, the graduate survey is something that is yet to come, and again, the parent and staff survey was a tool, or our tools, rather, that we thought were on the proactive end of trying to get good information for our principals and for our staffs to make improvements. And we intend on doing that, as I said, with the other employee groups that weren't connected to a specific school and then district-wide. And I also informed the board that in developing the district survey, the board is going to have a great deal of input into that. What is it that the board would like to see asked from the, from the community about the district operation? So I, again, I didn't seek board approval for this. We developed it, the idea, from the conversation that the board had, and then we proceeded to do it. And it was one of those administrative things that we just didn't, didn't think we needed board approval for.
Well, again, it's a process thing with me, and I'll go back and I'll watch the tape.
As long as everybody's commenting, I'm going to throw out another one. First, I want to thank you for announcing that you were closing the schools because of the bad weather. In fact, a lot of people told me that they were very positive that you announced on Friday that you were going to close school on Tuesday. It gave them more time. So thank you for being responsive and also looking at the safety of the employees. Number two, this is where the board gets into trouble, when we have professionals running our school district and we want to micromanage. This is a very good example of micromanaging when we shouldn't be doing that. That's all I have to say.
I would just like to point, because I brought it up earlier, I did find in the November 25th through December 13th, weekly summary for the board that it is mentioned, the school perception surveys. I'm not trying to micromanage or anything. I am just purely interested, and as a board member, when I ask for a copy of it to look at, I just don't see why I can't have one. I'm not trained to micromanage. I just want information. And when you've sent out these weekly summaries, you've told them, us, that they're confidential and that we're not supposed to share information. So I think it kind of, it rolls in to the morale plan as well as the school perceptions, which I had asked Bill to come and present. So I think the board is just genuinely interested in what's going on in our schools, what the climate is like. I think it's just an honest request of, hey, what's going on? That's all my intent was. And when I wasn't, didn't get the information, I was just kind of confused. So that's where I was coming from, was just an honest answer, or honest question, and I'm just very interested in what's going on in our schools. That's all.
Well, we did provide the information. Actually, I think I mentioned the school perception survey several times in the, in the weeklies.
I found it once, besides the other one that you just mentioned.
Last week I mentioned it as well. Not this week, well, this week and the week before. But the reason that we didn't send out the survey to anyone was actually to guarantee the integrity of the survey. In talking with Bill Foster, he didn't even want to have Cabinet see a copy of it until just before it was released. So that really is the reason. And again, when, I think a comment was made, and I, I don't remember the exact comment, but something about, I didn't get information until late in the day. I got five emails over the weekend, and I was not really near technology accessible. And it wasn't until this morning that we tried to fulfill some of the requests. So we're doing the best we can when we get the requests. We sincerely want to fulfill them, and it's the board's right to ask for some of that information, or all of that information, I should say, and we do the best that we can. So thank you.
My question is, when you were addressing me on the issue, and I apologize, maybe I
shouldn't have used the board policy as much as the handbook, but what exceptions then are you going to do for the staff? As a staff member, if I have two and a half weeks of vacation, I'm going on a two-week vacation, and I've already planned. I can't come into work and make up my time because I'm raising three kids, I'm on the school board, or I've got another part-time job. I just can't make it up. What exception, and who's going to pay for that?
Well, we sent out an email to staff last week, and we've, and we had a leadership team meeting last week about this and explained it to the principals and supervisors and managers as well. We're asking each manager, supervisor, and principal to work with their department and school in terms of making up that plan, making up that day. In the past, everybody looked for one uniform answer across the district. That doesn't work because we have unique circumstances, as you just pointed out, and we're asking each of those leaders to deal with their staffs in terms of making up those hours so that they can individualize those circumstances.
I am still very frustrated. I mean, we've spent hours on this. I'm not trying to micromanage. I won't do it again. If I'm going to waste hours on this and then you're going to change it at your own whim, why even do it then? So who's micromanaging whom? Thank you for your response.
All right, moving on to the consent agenda. Albert, I have a note that you wish to speak to the minutes of December 19th. The podium is yours, sir.
Albert Rocco, 1824 Gilke Street, Stevens Point. Previously, I spoke about several actions you took over the last few months that deals positively with staff morale. I read the minutes of the December 19th special meeting/ workshop presented by Charlie Carlson. The concerns of the focus groups are listed. They are workload increasing, less focus on teaching, lack of trust and respect, internal pay inequity, financial uncertainty, diminished voice, lack of transparency. That listing of concerns shows that you have a lot of work still to do. There was a list of recommendations that was included in those minutes. Thank you for the opportunity to address the board.
Thank you, Albert. All right, we've been asked to vote on items A, B, and D separately, so can we get a motion to approve items C, which are the minutes of our December 19th, 2013 special meeting workshop, and the recommendations for employment? And there is a revised personnel recommendations at your tables. Can we get a motion to approve those two items?
So moved.
In a second.
Second.
All right, roll call vote, Barb, please.
Ms. Faxon?
Yes.
Mr. Larson?
Yes.
Ms. Presley?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Shively?
I can't find the paper. I'm sorry.
Right here.
Yes.
Ms. Schirr?
Yes, but can I ask for a recommendation? When we get these revised ones, can you either highlight the ones that are changed from the ones that we've been looking at for three, you know, so then I'm not going back and comparing? It would be just easier even putting a little asterisk by it, because I don't know which ones I've looked at, and so I would appreciate that, and yes.
Ms. Totten?
Yes.
Mr. Evil?
Yes.
Mr. Rothman?
Yes.
All right, we'll then deal with A, B, and D separately, so let's start with item A. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of our December 9th, 2013 regular meeting?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, is there a discussion?
Yes. On page 5 of 4, up towards the top, it says, 4 of 5, I'm sorry. It was moved and seconded by Schirr and Totten to include the custodial working policy, 171. Ms. Shively pointed out that the board was off-topic. Ms. Schirr will bring up this topic later. I do not understand why that was there when there was no action and it has nothing to do with the action above, no clarifying. And if we're going to do stuff like that, that's fine, but then we do it all the time. So again, I don't see any reason why that needs to be there. On number seven, further down, we have the selection of the super task force member. I, thereto, do not see why the votes need to be listed. A vote was taken, and Bob was selected. So those are my two comments on that, on those minutes.
So how would you like us to address those two?
The first one and the second, I think, should be removed from the minutes.
All right, so you're wishing to amend the motion?
Correct.
Please do.
I would like to amend the motion to remove the section on page 4 of 5 that reads with, it was moved and seconded by Schirr and Totten, da-da-da, and also to remove under number seven, the individual votes for board members.
The vote tally. Okay, is there a second to that amendment?
Correct, vote tally. I'll second it. I mean, if we're going to do it, we've got to do it all the time, and there's, we've never done it before.
Okay. Is there any other discussion regarding that? All right, Barb, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Larson?
Yes.
Mr. Presley?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
No.
Ms. Shively?
Yes.
Ms. Schirr?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Evil?
Yes.
Ms. Faxon?
Yes.
Ms. Rothman?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, is there a motion to approve the minutes of our December 16th, 2013 regular meeting?
So moved.
And is there a second?
Second.
Oh, I'm sorry, you're right. We just, I'm sorry, thank you. We just approved the amendment. Now we need to go back and approve the minutes as amended for December 19th, 2013. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Presley?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Uh, no.
Ms. Shively?
Yes.
Ms. Schirr?
Yes.
Ms. Totten?
Yes.
Ms. Evil?
Yes.
Ms. Faxon?
Yes.
Mr. Larson?
Yes.
Mr. Rothman?
Yes.
All right, back to where I was, I got ahead of myself. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of the December 16th, 2013 regular meeting?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All right, discussion?
On page 2 of 4, we've had this in the past, and I know we've clarified or made it, a point put in the minutes, and I think it needs to be there again, for 9B1. It was moved and seconded to accept the committee's reports. I would like it to be clarified in there that we are not accepting the recommendations, only the report. So that, when someone goes back, it's very clear what the board, and I know we've done it before.
Could I just suggest, perhaps, you would say to accept receipt of the committee's report? Would that be acceptable? I mean, you're accepting it.
Well, as long as you accept the receipt of the report and not the recommendation, add that in there.
Okay, if you want it more clarified.
Yes, I want it very clear.
Okay, okay.
Very clear.
Better have the wording then, yeah.
I'd like to make that motion.
Please do.
I motion just what I just said, Barb.
To accept the report, not the, not the recommendations, okay.
Just adding the words "and" not the recommendations, right?
Exactly.
Correct. Is there a second?
Second.
All right.
I have a comment.
Yes.
This is not to criticize anyone. The first one that we just approved that I voted no on, those were actions that actually happened. It doesn't say recommendation on here, it says the report. If you want to know some of the things that keep us going on and on and on all night long, this is an example of some of those things. It's just my opinion, it's not a criticism, but these are the kind of things that have really nothing to do with student achievement. And some of the comments tonight, we are allowed to make, and I don't want to go off topic, so I'll hold off.
Thank you. Any other comments? Barb, roll call vote, please, on the amendment.
Ms. Scott?
No.
Ms. Shively?
Yes.
Ms. Schirr?
Yes.
Ms. Totten?
Yes.
Ms. Evil?
No.
Ms. Faxon?
Yes.
Mr. Larson?
No.
Mr. Presley?
Yes.
Mr. Rothman?
No.
Ms. Scott?
No.
Ms. Rothman?
Yes.
All right, moving on to consent agenda item D, approval of monthly bills as shown in the check summary report for the weeks ending December 6, 2013 through January 3, 2014, in the amount of $9,990,995.85. Is there a motion to that effect, please?
So moved.
Thank you, Barb. Is there a second?
Second.
Chris, discussion?
I just will not be approving the expenses because of funeral reimbursement, again, from the superintendent.
Any other discussion? Barb, roll call vote, please.
Ms. Schirr?
Yes.
Ms. Totten?
No.
Mr. Evil?
Yes.
Ms. Faxon?
Yes.
Mr. Larson?
Yes.
Ms. Presley?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
No.
Ms. Rothman?
Yes.
All right, moving on to agenda item nine, business services, review of financial statements, information. Bill, very quickly, and if there are questions, why don't we? Any overall comments, anything that we need to know?
These are through November 30th, so technically you've got about three months of wages and fringe benefits for school-year employees, although we do have five months of the year at that point.
Sure.
But there are explanations in there for some of the bigger accounts as far as revenues, expenses. If you have any questions, let me know.
Questions for Bill?
Because of our Fund 10 balance, the way it is, we did not have to borrow any money for short-term?
No. No. We were, I think we were down to about $2 million, I think, on November 30th. But then, once you start paying some of the back wages, that'll, that would have been gone.
And by doing, not having to borrow money, you probably save a few thousand dollars every year doing that?
You save, well, you save $1,500 just in legal fees alone, plus, plus the interest on it, and then whatever time it takes to put the whole plan together.
Other questions for Bill?
Is there any unusually large item on these bills, this one? Anything out?
None here. In the actual monthly bills, which you actually approved, there is a $7 million, $7 million check that went to BMO Harris to go into our money market account.
Okay.
We're not getting a lot more interest, but it's the best we can do at this point.
At this point, yeah. Okay, thanks, Phil.
Any other questions for Bill? All right, if not, it's information-only. Thank you, Bill. Item 9A2, highlights of the Legislative Reference Bureau, a bill relating to public school finance, information-only. Tom?
Good evening. The Legislative Reference Bureau was asked by a number of legislators to look at some issues that they might be considering for public school funding. Some of these are return items that have come about. The first one is not one that has been talked about a great deal, and that is creating a weighting for different types of students. In this particular case, they were looking at weighting based on poverty. And some of the interesting questions that come up with that would be, how do you go about that? They mentioned 30%, counting a student that's in, quote, poverty, whatever they define that to be, as 1.3, and then the questions, of course, come out as to, well, why 1.3? Why not 1.5 or 1.1? You know, how do you derive that particular percent? And then a question of some of the unintended consequences of, well, will this cause these students to be looked at as more valuable than others, and you'll try to search them out more and whatnot, and what kind of competition among districts this is bringing? So they're interesting food for thought about what will come to pass, if anything, with respect to when you apply weighting to any class of student, whether it's poverty or, you know, reduced lunch, or whether it's special ed or whatever, is how do you handle that? How do you avoid future legislative? And then, a question of some of the unintended consequences of, well, will this cause these students to be looked at as more valuable than others, and you try to search them out more and whatnot, and what kind of competition among distances this brings? So, they're interesting food for thought about what will come to pass, if anything, with respect to when you apply weighting to any class of student, whether it's poverty or, you know, reduced lunch, or whether it's special ed or whatever, is how do you handle that? How do you avoid future legislators playing politics with it, increasing funds, et cetera? One thing to always remember, if I could throw this bit of experience out, is whenever people, including the legislature, talk about new programs like, like this, maybe weighting, they're not coming up with new money. So, what they will do is take the money out of the available pool and reduce general aid, and then put that over for that particular new aid or whatever. So, it's not new money, and so, you're gonna have a variety of winners and losers. Another item being looked at is setting a flat grant of $3,000 per pupil, meaning that every school district, every pupil in every school district will be funded at least $3,000 per child. On the surface, without thinking about it, you may think that's a wonderful idea, but in truth, it's contrary to our longstanding principles of, of the equalized approach, the equalized aid formula. This is very regressive, because it would take $3,000 for every single child. So, right now, we have over 20 school districts in the state that receive no state aid whatsoever because they are so wealthy, as defined by property value, that they can easily afford to pay for the cost of their student's education without state aid. So, as I mentioned, they're not gonna come up with new money, so they'll be taking $3,000 per child, if they do this, away from the general aid formula, taking it away from school districts who are poorer, who need that money, and transferring it to districts that are very wealthy. So, it's, it's not equalized aid concept at all. And while the primary aid guarantee now, in the equalized aid formula, is $1,000 per child, that does not mean that each child, each child's, the district receives $1,000 for each child. It is still gauged on the value of the property. So, if, if the equalization aid formula works out that you only get 50 cents on the dollar for even the primary aid, you'd only get $500 per child instead of $1,000. So, it's based on equalized. This particular approach is not. So, be aware of that. We don't know exactly what's gonna happen yet with that, if anything. Another thing being looked at is a shift of school levy credit and first dollar credit to the equalized aid formula. Probability of that, in my experience in the past, is pretty nil, that that'll ever happen. School levy credit came about in the first place by taking money out of the school aid formula and then putting that into the levy credit. The state counts it as support for public education, but in truth, it doesn't come to the schools at all. It's a direct property tax relief item, which is fine, but that's exactly what it is. It is more disequalizing than distribution, distributing it through the equalized aid formula, but the probability of that going through is pretty slim. There are a lot of districts that profit from that, that will fight this very hard, and its ability to be passed, while possible, is, is not that great. Restoring Wisconsin's two-thirds funding. Wisconsin created the two-thirds funding when they came about with the QEO, and the two-thirds funding and the revenue limit controls. And while we're not quite at two-thirds funding right now, to move back to two-thirds funding would be fine, but again, the probability is it won't come out of new money, so they'll have to reduce or cut something else, either in the budget or in school funding, in order to accomplish that. So, that remains to be seen. Eliminating the per pupil categorical aid and moving that $275 to the per pupil levy increase. As you're aware, in the last couple of years, the states moved to providing a categorical aid, which would be a flat dollar amount per pupil, that's outside the revenue limit, and they just grant that per pupil across the board, somewhat similar to that discussion I had with you with regard to $3,000 per pupil. It goes to the very wealthy districts as well as the very poor districts in an exact equal proportion. That is a disequalizing aspect. Some legislators are interested in stopping that, eliminating that aid, putting that money back into the general aid formula and providing it as an integral part of the revenue limit worksheet, where the per pupil amount for revenue limit is increased by that amount, $275, very similar to it has, to what it has been since its inception of the revenue limit. Restoring the CPI, I believe they use a CPIU, the Urban, to increase the per pupil amount in the revenue limit. That has gone away to some part in the last couple of years. Some legislators are looking at trying to get that reinstated. Delaying the aid payments, this one is disturbing. The state budgets and operates on a cash basis. Even school districts haven't been allowed to operate on a cash accounting basis for decades. Instead, we work on a modified accrual basis. And the state has, over the past several years, in order to make the budgets look good, they've pushed some of the aid payments into the subsequent fiscal year. $75 million has, for some time now, been pushed out of the one year and put into the following year. We don't receive that money till July. Well, the, one of the things they're toying with now is moving $972 million into July. That would be very fiscally unsound. The comprehensive annual fiscal report that is done under GAAP, which is subsequently produced, already shows a $1.73 billion deficit by the state. At the same time, on a cash basis, the state's reporting a $759 million surplus. So, that's kind of the difference that you get in the two accounting styles. If they push another $972 million out of the current year into the next year on a cash accounting basis, from a fiscal responsibility standpoint, accounting standpoint, they're making it very difficult for future legislators to ever move to a modified accrual or full accrual system, where they're really recognizing their expenses, the liabilities in the year in which they were incurred, which is the way it should be. They really shouldn't be doing this. It's a very poor fiscal practice. They may gain some politics and some points by having to be able to quote in a campaign that they've got this surplus, but it's, it's not a real surplus. It's, it's a paper surplus. So, hopefully, that won't happen. And it guarantees found in the equalization aid formula, secondary aid has been guaranteed at a 90% level of the state average for some time now, and some of the legislators are talking about moving that to 100%, and that might be a positive move in that it'll help several of the districts who are struggling with negative tertiary aid, could bring them down into a more secondary aid, reduce their tertiary impact. So, that might be interesting. So, that's what's going on in some of the legislative activity right now. I just wanted to apprise you of that, as you speak with other board members, et cetera, and with legislators in our area.
Any questions?
Subject to your questions, that would conclude.
No questions, just a comment. Thank you very much for explaining all of these. It's extremely difficult to understand some of the finance and the legislative and how they're moving money around, but there's not additional money. So, you always give a really clear explanation, it's very appreciated.
I had one.
So, thank you.
Renee?
Did you have, have you had on your radar the charter school bill that's in front of the, in front of the House of Representatives at this time?
I have not been following that, no.
Yeah, it was just they had an open hearing last Thursday, and now what they're trying to do in the House of Representatives is to pass a charter school, where any charter organization could open a charter school anywhere in the state of Wisconsin without having it be approved by the school board or having it be an instrumentality of the school district, which, when you talk about financing, there's only so much money, so if they do approve that, then the...
That's right. I haven't seen it. Is that an actual assembly bill, or are they?
It's, yes, it is.
It is, okay.
And they had a hearing last Thursday.
The hearing, okay.
Thank you, Tom.
You're welcome.
Moving into nine B, educational services, student services and technology. Bill, the elementary daily schedule survey results, information only.
Thank you, and good evening. Last August, we came to you with a, the elementary principal group came to you, along with some classroom teachers, with a proposal for modifying our daily schedule at the elementary level. Basically, what we looked at doing was making the encore or MAPs classes consistent in time, moving those to 45-minute time blocks for all of our special classes, and it also looked at doing a rotating schedule. So, rather than Monday through Friday schedule, we have a rotating schedule on a six-day rotation, when those MAPs classes or encore classes are meeting with those students. We did this as a result of a workshop that we held with Dr. Michael Reddig, who is a scheduling expert, and he works all over the country, in fact, even internationally, on putting schedules together to try to maximize instructional time for schools and for students and teachers. We told you at that time that we would survey staff, and we surveyed our staff in late, all of our elementary staff, classroom teachers, special education teachers, MAPs teachers, everybody had a chance to participate in the survey. We did this in late November. We think we got a pretty good return. We had about 72% of the people who could participate in the survey give us information back on the electronic survey that we submitted. After we received those results, did some analysis of the results, and came up with what we believe are the following positive effects of the new schedule, and there's five of them listed there. And these came through pretty loud and clear in both kind of a statistical way, where we could look at some, some statistical data and say, this percentage of people are seeing this improvement. And also, some of it comes from just comments, free comments, free comments that people made in the survey. But anyway, basically, we found these five positive effects is that it has created a more consistent schedule for students and teachers. It has provided longer uninterrupted blocks of time for particularly core academics for reading and math on a daily basis. It has increased the amount of time that teachers have to provide both interventions and enrichment to students each week, because that's built into the schedule every day. We've also seen an increase in the number of students that we've been able to provide interventions and enrichment to, I think primarily because we do have a consistent time to do that each day. And then finally, came through loud and clear from, from classroom teachers and at grade levels, is that they've been able to collaborate at a much greater level than they ever have in the past, be able to talk to their teaching cohorts at their grade level and collaborate with them and do some mutual planning. We also asked, we didn't ask for negatives necessarily, but you might call them negatives, but we asked for, how can you improve, what could we do to still look at this schedule and try to improve it? And there are eight items listed there, and these are mainly gleaned from the free responses that we got from people. You can imagine, when you get 166 people all giving free responses, there's lots of responses there. So, went through those and tried to categorize those into areas where there was at least five or more responses that were of the same opinion or of the same, stating the same thing. And with that in mind, we came up with eight things that we could look at to try to improve the daily schedule. One being to try to do a better job involving special education teachers and specialists, not just grade-level teachers, but try to involve them in the collaborative planning. A second one was to provide, to provide more of a transition time between MAPs classes. Our schedules are very tight now. They're, they're scheduled 45 minutes almost back-to-back, so there's very little transition time, especially for MAPs teachers, between their classes. Being able to provide, we're doing a good job of providing instructional times for intervention and enrichment. They're looking for some support during that time also. What kind of supports can we provide during those intervention and enrichment blocks? Interestingly enough, we had, I think it was six people who said, "We need a longer school day. I just can't get it all in. We need to lengthen our day with everything we're trying to do." And I think more and more people are sort of coming to that conclusion. It's, it's getting more difficult to do that in the length of our elementary school day. There were some comments that they'd like us to try to replace that lost time for physical education, particularly at the fifth and sixth grade levels. There was talk about trying to replace that lost art instructional time. When we went to 45 minutes, we shortened up some of those classes. There were a few comments, at least enough in common, that they felt that sometimes the 45-minute block was a little bit long for K-1 students. It wasn't consistently across the board, but there was enough there to kind of put that into a group of, of a concern. And then, some people were feeling that they, they're, they're having lots of collaboration time, sometimes maybe at the expense of having my own individual planning time, so not losing sight that they do, they still have a need for some individual planning time in addition to the collaboration time that this schedule has provided for them. The tables that are there, I think, support what those positive effects are and what the things are that we still need to look at. We do have Michael Reddig coming back for three days in February. He'll be spending a couple of days with the secondary folks, as they're looking at what they can do to their daily schedules to make them more effective. But we also get a day with Michael Reddig to try to address some of these issues, some of these things, how can we improve them? And I think the, the only thing we need to be careful of is there, there are some things we possibly could do, but we want to make sure that if we do it, we're not gonna eliminate the positive effects that we have seen instructurally by doing something that's being recommended or being asked for at this point in time. We do plan on doing, redoing the survey, probably in first part of May, middle part of May. We'll compare those results to these, to these results. Hopefully, we can keep tweaking the schedule, making it better. At this point, I think we feel pretty confident that it was, it was a good move. I think it's been, overall, it has, has had positive effects on student learning and our ability to deliver the educational program to our students. It's certainly not a perfect schedule. There are still issues with our scheduling that can maybe be tweaked in the, in the daily schedule, but I think as, as the super task force gets together and looks at our school year and the length of our school day and some of those kinds of things, I think it's gonna be some of those kinds of things that can help us improve this even more than it has. This schedule is having to work within the time limits that we have currently. If we can lengthen that somehow, I think it can help address some of these, some of these needs.
Thanks, Bill. Chris?
Bill, I'm sure this is me. I'm sure it's not you or the report, but I did not have time to call, email, or anything today. I was tied up all day long. Okay. On page one, the question in table one is, "The elementary daily schedule provides the opportunity for daily scheduled collaborative planning time for grade-level teachers." 78.31% say they agree.
Agree or strongly agree?
Or strongly agree.
Yes.
And the other ones, okay. Now, if you go over to table two, on average, how many minutes per week were you or are you able to collaborate with other teachers in your grade level? You look at the previous, and it says 78.92%.
And none of the new, it goes down to 41.
Yeah.
But as you go down, those times are increasing and those percentages are going up. So, that's where we're capturing those percent. It's, it's, rather than having just 0 to 60, now we've gone from only 8% having 60 to, an hour to two hours to 34%. So, we've increased that by 25%.
Okay, I see. Yeah, I knew I was missing it somewhere, and I kept thinking...
It's a little deceptive. The, the number of people who only had an hour to collaborate is going down, but the people who've been able to collaborate more than an hour is going up.
Up, okay.
And that's why, that's why the first one's going down.
I, I just...
So, it's actually a positive.
Okay.
Yeah.
I knew it was me. Thanks, Bill.
Okay, other questions for, for Bill? All right, thank you, sir. Item B two, the approval of the memorandum of agreement with the Boys and Girls Club of Portage County, and that is an action item. Greg, please.
Good evening. What you have in front of you in item nine B two is exactly that. It's a memorandum of agreement. Every year, we do contract with the Boys and Girls Club to help perform our, our truancy abatement process, and this memorandum of agreement will allow a more seamless flow of the information for those adjudicated youth that are assigned to the truancy abatement program.
Let's get, let's get it formally on the table. Is there a motion to approve the memorandum of agreement between the district and the Boys and Girls Club of Portage County as recommended in a...
Some move.
Second.
Sorry, Ben.
All right, discussion, questions for Greg? Barb, roll call vote, please.
Ms. Totten?
Yes.
Mr. Evil?
Mr. Evil?
Yes.
Ms. Beckson?
Yes.
Mr. Larson?
Yes.
Mr. Presley?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Shiglaid?
Yes.
Ms. Scherich?
Yes.
Ms. Roslin?
Yes. All right. Our next item is the technology and, and the technology plan. Brian, before we let you speak, Reed, you had asked to speak to that.
First, you know, why do your board members feel it appropriate to limit a three minutes to comment to the board while most of you tonight took well over five minutes? You know, and then you walk out when I'm talking to people. That's real nice. Thomas Jefferson didn't state the most important element of a free society was wholly nor running for office. What he did state, and it's quote, is that the most important element of a free society is an informed and involved citizenry. Here isn't anyone in the public that comes to more meetings, actually reads the packet and does independent accurate research than myself. No wonder so few people in the public attend your meetings. Jackson School, here this Jackson School is coming up. This is how, this is where this Jackson School is coming into. And I hope you guys are kind of watching, especially you, Bob. You know, that's talking here, board to, you know, because next month, they want you to approve a partnership, you know, in this technology development center. And here it is, this Jackson School. This is, this is where, this is, this is how this Jackson School, what the superintendent of school is looking for all along, whether it's a charter school at Jackson or this technology center at Jackson, okay? And I'm real concerned about this partnership. If you get some money and they put, oh, it's going to cost the district nothing, zero to district. You know, it's, it's the, you know, we may need Jackson School for grade realignment, the same thing you've been talking about, okay? That's, if you read the grade realignment, and I don't know if you guys ever read it, or maybe if you read it, you forgot it, that's a big play. How does this play out? And Jackson School was mentioned in it. So before next month, like he's trying to rush you into this like you've already okayed Jackson School, which I don't believe you have. He may think that you have, but you haven't. And you haven't approved this technology plan, though he thinks you have, and he just keeps talking like it, and then he thinks after a while, you start believing that you actually have. I'm real concerned about partnerships with Century and what do they get out of it? What do we get out of it? And this Jackson School and all of this. Just take your time on this stuff. And right away, he wants this here for, for action at the 27th meeting. I'm real concerned about that. And I hope you are. Maybe it's something good, but boy, when you start putting these partnerships in and strings, Jackson School, what is he telling them? Once again, this guy, I believe, is talking way beyond privately with people. And you, board members, or at least a lot of you, aren't privy to a lot of those conversations. And you've got to take control of this, this, this board.
All right. Brian.
Good evening. I'm here to talk about our district Phase II technology partnership. My name is Brian Casey. I'm the Director of Technology for the district. And I think this is fantastic news. I'm really excited to be able to share this with you and, and talk about the plans and things that we're contemplating and, and how this is going to be a great thing for kids. I have some members of the Tech Steering Committee that came with, Jennifer Klisch and October Penner. We also have Jerry Thrun, our technology manager in the audience. There were two members that really wanted to be here, Jeff Millsna. He coaches wrestling, so he was unable to be here, but he did a video and we put it in the presentation. So he really wanted to share some of these ideas with you, as well as Liz Steele, who's our tech integration specialist for the district. So what is a partnership? This is a partnership between Century and the district. And Century's part of the partnership is that they're going to provide $2.76 million funding for mobile devices for the next three years that is given to the school district. The district side of things is that we are going to provide the resources for professional development. We're also going to upgrade and maintain the technology systems that are required to have those devices. So when we started talking about this, we had some guiding principles. And I put a compass up there to kind of remind everyone that these are the principles that we on the committee talked about, and then we really wanted to guide the developments in this partnership. Number one, devices do not guarantee anything. They do not guarantee innovation. Just because you put a device in a child's hand does not mean that there's going to be something new that is happening. Devices also do not guarantee that there's teaching and learning going on. Just because you have technology does not mean that you're going to affect that. Devices do not guarantee that there's going to be mastery of the technology standards that we set up in this district, the things that we wanted them to do with technology. Second guiding principle has to do with professional development. If you take that first principle and you say that devices aren't a guarantee, then what is the guarantee? Guarantee is a teacher. We really have to make sure that we are doing a good job of professional development. It's a necessary first step. If we don't take that first step to make sure that our teachers know how to use technology, we're wasting money. Good professional development will sustain professional growth. That's not always the case. We've had professional development in the past that's a module or something that got checked off. Well, we're looking at something that's a little bit more involved and sustained. Professional development also, if it's done well, can increase employee productivity. And that's the entire point of having technology. Technology makes things easier, faster, makes people more efficient. Finally, professional development increases student learning, career opportunities, and engagement for students when it's done well. So some more guiding principles. The third is we need to upgrade and sustain a strong technology system. If we don't have the systems to support the technology, then again, bringing devices isn't going to matter if we don't have a strong network. So that's the first thing on there is network infrastructure. We've spent a lot of time and also resources making sure that our network infrastructure now is upgraded. We are going up to one gigabyte connection this year. Jerry's been working very tirelessly on that to make sure that that is pulled off. And our goal is for next year to have 10 gigabytes of connectivity for the district. Also, we have the technical support. We have an excellent team of technicians that work for the district. They know our teachers, they know our students, they know our needs, and they do a fantastic job. Strategic planning. We're trying to look at not just what do we need this year or next year, but what do we need four years from now? And finally, continuous professional development. Again, you hear that word, professional development. It's the key to making all these things happen. So what are our goals? What are the things we want to accomplish with this partnership? Number one, we want to provide all students and teachers with skills to meet the district technology standards. What are those standards? I've summarized them real briefly in the key points. Collaboration. We want to teach students how to use technology to collaborate better, to work together on projects. We want to teach students how to use technology for communication. It's not just sending out an email, it's how do you do a video conference with someone that's halfway around the world? Or how to use a network to actually set up a group project? We want to do some problem solving, real-world problem solving. And technology. Technology skills are an important component of our technology goals. Number two, we want to focus on teaching and learning, not devices. Again, that's a theme that will keep coming up again and again, but we really have to make that the key of our technology initiative. It's about human beings, it's about what we do, it's about teachers and students in the classroom. It's not just about handing out devices and say, here you go, here's technology. Another key goal would be, number three, to create sustainable systems. We don't want to create training that's going to last for one year and check people off and say, no, you're trained. That's not realistic, it's not sustainable. We also don't want to have resources that are going to be here one year and gone the next. We want to create a system that's going to be here to last and that's going to be able to grow with the needs of the district. That involves resources, upgrades and maintenance, continuous professional development. Oops, I want to go back, and that was it. Sorry. Moving on. A lot of what we did with this Technology Steering Committee involved technology survey that we gave this year. When I came into the district, I really wanted to have a baseline and understand what the needs of the district were. What was it that teachers wanted to learn how to do? Where was their knowledge and their understanding in terms of technical skills? I mean, I had a lot of unanswered questions. So I created a technology survey, and then later on, I was introduced to the school perceptions, and we used that service, and they were phenomenal. I was able to use an existing technology survey that had been given to other districts and modify it to our needs, especially with professional development. I also helped listening sessions in all the school buildings in the district and listen to teachers and was able to collect some input from them about what their needs were, what their frustrations were. So when you look at this, I'm summarizing a lot of the very technical and specific information in the surveys to the key points. Number one, teachers said they wanted access to mobile devices. That was especially true in the elementary schools where there's been very limited access. At SPAS, where the one-to-one has been there for a number of years, that's not the case. But for most of the teachers in the district, they wanted access to devices. They also wanted time to learn. This was huge. If it's the one thing that I heard out of all the listening sessions and comments that I read was the time. How do we give teachers the time that they need to be able to learn a new technique, a new technical skill, and then bring that in the classroom where it makes a difference? They also wanted flexibility in professional development. There was a large dissatisfaction with having group presentations once a semester where we bring teachers in and we say, everyone's the same, and we're all going to teach you Google Docs, and you're checked off, and you're good to go. What we really, what teachers really want is something that applies to the subject that they teach and their grade level. So if you're an elementary teacher and you teach third grade, you want professional development that's going to make a difference, that you're going to be able to use in your classroom, and not something that would apply to a high school teacher. They also want a differentiated training. We have some teachers on our staff that are phenomenal with technology. They do a great job. We have some teachers that are comfortable, and we have some teachers that feel threatened or feel insecure with their use of technology. So we can't offer the same training to those groups. We really wanted to, teachers said that they really want to have differentiated training that would allow someone that has maybe an apprehension with technology to come in at that level and learn at their own pace. Okay. When I presented this to the Technology Steering Committee, these next two photos actually generated quite a bit of discussion. When you look at that, that is what I thought a classroom maybe looked like 100 years ago. Maybe it wasn't that long ago. You have desks, you have a teacher, you have a chalkboard. Next picture, you see a teacher, and there's desks, and there's a chalkboard, and there's students. So what has changed? In a sense, maybe very little has changed. One thing that I see between those two pictures, though, is the teacher. The teacher has not changed, and that is probably still the most important thing in both of those classrooms. The other thing that's interesting to note, that you could take technology, you could put it into that second picture, and nothing probably has changed. Instead of a chalkboard, you could have a smartboard. Instead of students sitting there writing with paper, you could have laptops. But maybe the basic delivery and type of instruction hasn't changed at all. So what we're really trying to do is say, it's not just about bringing devices into the classroom, it's about how the teacher uses them that's of crucial importance. Now, what would be our vision of how to use technology? I love this picture when I found it. If you see, there's students that are collaborating, they're working together, they have devices, they're using them, but it's not just about the device. They have books out, they have pens and paper, and they're working together. So the device, really, if we reach our goals, technology just becomes a tool like anything else that's well-integrated in what's going on. So what are the components of sustained professional development? Create flexible professional development opportunities to small classes, differentiated levels, grade-level specific groupings. Develop job-like classes. If you're a music teacher, maybe you'd like to have a class of how to use technology for music. Or if you're a third-grade teacher, maybe you'd like to be with other third-grade teachers to talk about what's appropriate for that curriculum. Provide flexible scheduling. Teachers gave a number of different answers about when they would like training. Number one being during the school day. That's hard to do, but we'd like to be able to provide some of that. Also, times after school and in the summer. Self-directed and independent learning was not a very popular choice by our teachers for how they would like professional development, but it really is a great option, especially for our more advanced technological, technology learners. So we will be providing some of that. We will also continue to utilize early release and institute days, although I think that something is worth saying there, that's how we've always done things. So just to continue and say that we're going to rely on those days won't be enough. We're really going to have to do more. Some more components. Summer technology camps and classes. We really could do a great job of offering some workshops and classes. There's opportunities like an ed camp. CESA 5 has actually been interested in hosting a Google Summit in Stevens Point, and if we had the facilities to do it, they probably would come here and do it for us. Differentiated and personalized training, embedded support and training, and that has to do with tech integration specialists and coaches, and we're going to hear more about that from the staff members that have come. Create well-equipped and accessible professional development center. We really need facilities to be able to pull this off. If we want to be able to do small classes and differentiated training, we need somewhere to go with that. So over here, we have what's called the Innovative Teacher Coaching Cycle, and this talks about having tech integration specialists come in and work in the classroom. So when we talk about embedded support, what we want is to have a teacher or tech integration specialist come in and assess needs and plan instruction with that teacher. They do in-class coaching as it's going on, and then they reflect and revise. The plan for the technology partnership with Century is to provide full, four-time technology, or four full-time technology integration specialists, three of which would be funded by the, by the partnership and one by the district. We also want to utilize building technology committees. There's already a lot of existing support there. We also want to utilize building technology leaders. A number of people on the Technology Steering Committee are building technology leaders. There's teachers out there that are great, and we want to involve them in the process. And then that just refers to the Innovative Teaching Coach, Teacher Coaching Cycle. Teachers coaching teachers. Now, one of the really interesting ideas that we've been talking about is having teachers work with our tech integration specialists. And let's say, for example, a tech integration specialist comes into Jen's classroom, and she's doing something that's phenomenal with third-grade students. How do we get that out and how do we share that with the other third-grade teachers in the district? One of the ways that we could do it is to have them come up with a training and then provide that to the other third-grade teachers. Now, this is a video of Liz Steele, who is our tech integration specialist in the district. And like I said, she really wanted to be here, so I'd like you to listen to her comments. And she does a really good job of explaining what coaching is about and what we could do with this model.
Hello, everyone. My name is Liz Steele, and I'm the Technology Integration Specialist at SPAS. I'm so sorry I can't be there tonight, but I'd like to make a few comments about the opportunity the district has to hire additional technology integration specialists, or TIS. It's really exciting we have the chance to grow and strengthen our TIS team because according to a district technology survey that was sent out to staff this fall, 75% of the participants stated that we need more TIS staff. Currently, we have one position at SPAS, and that's me. We also have one FTE at the junior highs, which is split amongst three fabulous staff members, and currently, there's no representation at the elementary level. The survey results really show how important this role is to teachers as they begin learning about new tools and implementing technology more and more in the classroom. And again, this role really isn't about providing just a training to teachers and sending them along their way, it's about coaching them along the way, working with them during the school day, throughout the school day, and during class, and even co-teaching. So it's important that teachers throughout the district have access to somebody in this role. Also, with a larger TIS team, we'll be able to be more responsive to the needs of staff. In the same survey, the majority of the participants stated that they wanted smaller group sessions and workshops as opposed to larger training sessions. And they wanted workshops and resources that are aligned to their content areas, district initiatives, and also their current technology skill sets. And with more TIS, we'll be able to collaborate, create, and deliver these workshops and resources to teachers to meet these needs. And also, I'd like to stress the importance that the TIS position be a full-time position for that individual. I've found through experience that this role is really an on-call position, need to be as available as possible. So that full-time position would allow the TIS to have that open and flexible schedule so that they can meet with all teachers during any time in the school day, before, after school, and lunch, to work with them. And currently, not all district staff have access to that. So I'm very excited about this opportunity, and thanks again so much for the time. So I'm very excited about this opportunity and thanks again so much for the time.
So the next thing is about Technology Professional Development Center. So why do we need a professional development center for technology? Number one is it's about professional development and growth. If we really want to make this about professional development, we have to start doing things differently. And we don't have the resources right now to do that. Number two, we want to talk about training before deployment. If we're talking about bringing in thousands of devices and introducing those into elementary classrooms, we need a place to be able to train its teachers before the devices are deployed. One of the most common blunders with one-to-one technology initiatives and other tech deployments is merely handing out the devices and saying, "Here you go, here's the device and we'll get back to you about the professional development and we'll try and do it along the way." It doesn't work. It has to come first and it has to be a very organized and sustained effort. Efficiency. While we have four tech integration specialists that are going to be asked to help train the entire district on technology, we could send them running around the entire district to different locations or we could come up with a place that would suit our needs and do the training there. We also want to model what a 21st century learning environment looks like. And currently, we don't really have the facilities to do that. We need space, we need tables for collaboration. And you'll see some pictures later on for some great examples of what that might look like. We also want to create capacity for future technologies. We know that computers are basically become outdated every 18 months. That's Moore's Law. It goes up exponentially. So right now, we're talking about the technology that we have. What's going to be available two years from now? We don't know. If we have training facilities, we'll be able to bring some of those in, the new technologies, and have teachers actually learn and be able to be trained on them before we deploy. We want a flexible learning environment that has multiple ways for our teachers to learn. It doesn't look like just a regular classroom or a repurposed library and media center. We're also interested in doing parent education. If we had a facility that was open, we could do education for parents in the community on Skyward, digital citizenship and things like that. So these are our current facilities. If you're looking at this right here, the picture on the left is the view from the back. And then if you stand in the back, I took that other picture over there. So what are our current facilities for training our staff on technology? We have 15 computers and a smartboard. We also, in that space, have office space for four technicians. And I forgot, there's also a special education assistant teacher that also works back there as well. So it's actually five. It's inaccessible with limited space. When I say inaccessible, I really should have taken these pictures in the summer. When I came in in July, this area is overflowing with boxes. This is where all the new technology comes into the district and we literally, it's, people are working on top of each other in this space. The original purpose of this facility was to train people in technology, but I think it's really outlived its purpose. We're not doing one-size-fits-all trainings. We don't want to do mass trainings where it's all the same and we need more space. And this space is for 1,000 employees. This isn't just for training teachers. This is for every employee in the district that needs technology training. Why a Technology Professional Development Center? I keep coming back to the why, but I think it's important to know. First of all, it's about student-teacher collaboration and learning. That's our goal. We want to create a complex, multi-layered and differentiated staff training. Those are a lot of big words in there, but it is complex and it is multi-layered. In order to do it well, we need the facilities. And we're not talking about just trying to do it to get it done. We want to actually do it as best that we can. We have eight employee groups with differing skills and needs. So not only are we talking about teachers, we're also talking about all the other employee groups that also have some of the same needs that are specific to their job functions and also specific in a sense that they need differentiated training. We also want to make this systematic. We don't want it to be an accident. We don't want to just do it haphazardly when we can. We want to create a system that works and we want to have it sustained. We want to make a commitment to professional development and keep it going. Finally, as far as classroom teachers go, we want to be able to mirror classroom technology in a sense that we want to show teachers what is available to them in the classroom and make sure that they have that in the classroom. We don't want to have technology in our training facilities that they aren't going to get in the classroom. Some technology survey results that go along with this. These are some questions I pulled out that were very specific. When asked about what kind of professional development teachers really would like, workshops with collaborative discussions and experimentation, two to three facilitators with 15 participants. Now, if you look at the combined level of agreement on that question, very important, it's almost 90%. That's what the teachers said they wanted. Instruction or trainings designed for specific learning teams. For example, first grade reading or junior high or high school. Also, a combined level of agreement there that is at 90%. When asked about differentiated training, we also had a large combined level of agreement, over 80%. Asked about mentoring, coaching by integration specialists, almost 75% of the teachers felt that that was very important or important. So we get down to the Professional Development Center and the funding for that. Did you want to talk about that? Okay.
So the first question that we've asked ourselves was, what is it that we really want to do with a technology plan? And the answer was very clearly, professional development. In the first phase partnership that we, the grant that we had from Sentry, it was really more about the devices, the one-to-one laptop initiative, as well as some technology integration specialists that we put into place, but it was done side-by-side at the same time. And what we've learned from that experience and what all the literature says is, we have to provide the professional development upfront before we deploy, as Brian indicated. So about a year ago, a year and a half ago, we had a, I asked an architectural firm and a set of engineers and Brian Scheibach, who's the Director of Technology from CISA V, along with Jerry Thrun, to take a look at Jackson School as a possibility for a, one of the possibilities for a center. And on a pro bono basis, these folks came in and took a look at it and said, "Here's what we think it would take, given the vision that you've outlined." Sentry, the Sentry Insurance Foundation has as part of the Phase Two partnership devoted $200,000 towards the center because Sentry sees that the professional development is absolutely critical to the success of Phase Two. We've begun receiving a revenue stream through the SciPress vouchers, which is our monies as a result of a Microsoft lawsuit that was done nationally. There were criteria that schools needed to submit that had purchased technologies and those vouchers were then submitted and the money stream began coming in and we were told, we were officially notified actually, that our vouchers would reach about $418,000. And then when we were talking with Skyward about how to develop a pipeline of students and curriculum in order to fulfill their needs, which they outlined over a 10-year period, I proposed the idea of a tech center. And Cliff King, who is here with us this evening from Skyward, became exceptionally enthusiastic about this and could see a range of benefits for the business community in particular that such a center and such a professional development program could bring, not just the district, the teachers and the kids, but the business community. And then from there, Cliff talked with a couple of other business partners in the community and in order to reach the, he asked, "What's it going to take?" And I said, "Well, if the board approves the use of the SciPress vouchers and accepts the Phase Two partnership, which includes the $200,000, we'd be roughly about $300,000 short in terms of what it would take to actually open the center." Cliff felt exceptionally confident that the business community would step forward and to date, we have more than 50% of that $300,000 already committed. So the total is roughly $918,000. The cost to the district would be zero if the board approved the vision and the concept. And what I'd like to do at this point is ask Cliff to come up and speak to the board about his involvement and that of some of the other business partners. I did ask the other business partners who have committed to it if they were willing to have their business names made public at this time and they said they wanted to hold off until we were able to reach the number and until the board actually got to the point where it was going to vote on the proposal. But Cliff said that he wanted to come and speak and is pretty passionate about it. So Cliff, thank you.
Thank you, Attila. Good evening, everybody. Technology, it's in every aspect that there's, any business that does anything today uses technology. Attila mentioned is we've got a real need for hiring some programmers. If we had 20 more programmers today, we would hire them. What we're finding though is just recently, the state of Wisconsin included computer science as part of the mathematical requirements for the state. I think it's a great move on the state's part. When you talk to companies like ourselves, Sentry, Travel Guard, anybody that's looking for programmers, there is a definite shortage. And when you look at the training that they're proposing with this Professional Development Center, I can speak from experience. We do districts, we're in 20 states, we're in nine different countries. I can tell you, what Stevens Point is up against right now is not unique. So many districts are out there. They have the tools to do this great job and what that, those tools will do will actually save money in the long run. When Attila approached me about this, I mean, I was on board right from the get-go. I don't think he had to spend 10 minutes with me because of the experience that I have with other districts throughout this state and all the other states that we do business in. Technology is the future. By giving the children this capability to learn how to use the technology with collaboration, collaboration is something that our company uses right now. It's called the Agile Management, SCUMM management. But collaboration is before, when you'd come to our offices, you'd find the programmers, they'd be in their cubes and they'd be clicking away. And all you hear is the keystrokes of them doing the programming. Today, collaboration is a very important aspect for them to be able to collaborate and get buy-in from everybody that is on that team. What they're trying to do here with this Professional Development Center is going to do nothing but make this district one of the top districts in the state and it's going to be very attractive for companies like ourselves, Sentry World, Delta Down, are going to have the ability to be able to attract new employees to come here with a progressive training program like this for the teachers to actually utilize the technology that's there. And it's, like I said, it's not unusual when you look at a district of this size, if you use the technology well enough, you're going to find that you're going to be able to save costs in the long run. And you're going to give these kids the tools that they need to go out there and get a good-paying job and potentially stay right here at Stevens Point. I can't tell you how passionate I am about this and when Attila asked me to come here tonight, I said, "Absolutely." And part of the reason we got involved is Attila shared with us what was going on. Sentry's involved with it. And when I, when I look at what we had to face here in the last two and a half years, this is our way of giving back to the community. And I'm very proud to be here tonight to represent those businesses and tell you how valuable I see this particular project for the community, for Skyward, for the students of Stevens Point School District. Any questions? If any questions anybody has for me, I'll be more than happy to answer them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I will continue and you'll be hearing from some more teachers coming up. The proposed site that we have, the estimates we're done for is a Jackson School site. I included the drawings that we had. You notice that it's not the whole school. We're not talking about opening up the school. We're talking about putting in some facilities that we can use for training. There's a summary cost estimate for Technology and Professional Development Center. The remodel was $239,000. Mechanical, electrical, plumbing, $124,000. When it says HVAC, that includes air conditioning, which was not in place. Design fees, technology, infrastructure and devices. Total project cost estimate at $918,000. This is my drawing. I took some of the architectural drawings and put in a vision of what it would look like in those rooms in terms of what we're talking about. The detail is in the board pack and it's probably hard to see just looking at the screen. But you notice at the very top, we have two collaborative areas there that sort of have, on one part, they have a normal classroom setup, but they also have collaborative pods where there's actually tables for people to collaborate and they also have individual screens where they can share the content. Also in those rooms, we plan on having a telepresence unit and a multi-touch smartboard as well as a 3D printer to show our teachers how those work. The other classrooms are flexible. There is seating in the rooms, but there's also devices on carts so we can move those around depending on what type of training we have. We want an area that is sort of a lounge area where people can relax, continue the conversations that they've had during their training. We also can use that as a collaborative space. We want to have some screens put in and with mobile devices, we could easily bring those in there as well. Okay. And Jeff Melza was very passionate about this and he was one of our tech integration specialists in the district last semester. He couldn't be here tonight because he's with his wrestlers tonight. I hope they're winning. And I'll play his video for you.
Hello. My name is Jeff Melza. I'm a teacher at PJ Jacobs Junior High School and I was asked by Mr. Casey to present today on the proposed Technology Training Center and about how it might affect classroom teachers. I wanted to be with you guys this evening, however, my wrestlers are wrestling a match in Mozeni. So thanks to this app, TouchCast, I was able to do a short video recording to share my thoughts with you. For those of you who don't know me, during the course of the past year, I served as the interim TIS at PJ Jacobs. I teach four sections of regular science and I also have a section of accelerated blended science. My classroom is very, very technology-oriented. My students use Chromebooks on a regular basis. So I'm going to go ahead and get started. In the upper right-hand corner of the screen, you'll see that I have a list of some of the key things that I wanted to make sure that I covered today. The first thing I have is, from a classroom teacher, when I look at the proposal, number one is access to the technology integration staff. Currently, we're sitting at 1.8 FTEs. By changing this to four, we'll be able to more effectively meet the needs of the teachers and students in our district. This will mean we can have more on-demand help for teachers and students in the classroom and we'll be able to have more effective professional development. TIS staff will be able to create more training programs that will be able to be offered to staff at various times that meet their busy schedules and we will be able to differentiate those programs based on the training needs of the staff and the groups that are there. I think these two are incredibly important, especially after having served in that during the first semester of this school year. The ability to be able to have those differentiated programs will mean that staff can progress at the speed that they're comfortable with and that is absolutely critically important. The second thing I have up here is a robust training program. During my time with the TIS, I've developed a great deal of respect for Mr. Casey and the work he's done to provide a structured PD program for the district. This includes the emphasis we put on Google Apps for Education. However, without the work in this proposal, we won't have the personnel or the tools to carry out this effective training program and expand it to all the teachers in the district. Currently, what we have is a system where teachers go to the institute day and I love presenting at those, but we just don't have a really effective means for follow-up and to offer support for staff. This increase in TIS personnel will allow us to provide staff with follow-up support and provide them with support in the classroom where they need it. Another major, majorly important piece to this is that we need to make sure that we have high-quality learning environments for teachers. During the past semester, I've had teachers in the back of my classroom sitting on lab tables designed for chemistry and physics experiments and I've been able to make that work thanks to having a great group of colleagues at PJ's and awesome support from the other TIS individuals in the district like Liz Steele and October Penner. But if we really want... But if we really want people, in this case, teachers, to step up, we need to provide them with a comfortable collaborative workspace. When I was able to look over the proposal that you're all seeing tonight, I was able to see a picture of this training facility, and when I look at it and I look at the rooms that are listed as training rooms four and five, I see an awesome learning environment for students and for teachers. And when I look at these types of environments, I see a spot where we will be able to provide differentiated instruction, one-on-one instruction for teachers when they need it, we'll be able to give them an opportunity to experiment with different room arrangements, different types of collaborative learning experiences, and that's something we don't have currently is a place for teachers to be able to work with that and then bring that experience back in their classroom. I wanted to thank you for giving me a chance to talk to you today, and if anyone does have any questions, I would look forward to answering any of those. But I was very excited to speak to you tonight. Hopefully, my boys did well at the wrestling match, and have a good evening.
Okay, let's go back. So one of the, we did have the opportunity to visit the facilities at UWSP, and they have a room called the CCIT there, which is used to help teachers learn how to use technology, and we were able to borrow a lot of the ideas from that, especially the collaborative workspaces, and it really is a great place to learn. And at this time, October Penner would also like to address the board.
Hi, good evening. I'm kind of in a unique position in that I have been on the committee who helped form the first phase of the partnership with Sentry Foundation and the Laptop Initiative and helped write that document to get that going, and am now here in the role, in this case, as TIS. I also am a seventh-grade science teacher at Ben Franklin and online leg personnel for Ben Franklin as well, so kind of a few hats. But I come here in my role as TIS tonight and some with teachers, so I have a few things to say, I will shorten them up as they have been hit by Liz Steele and Jeff Melzner as well. But I want to start with kind of the history of what's happened with Sentry and what we've learned from it and what we are hoping to see come forward with this proposal. So I kind of divided it up into two parts that we found were pretty critical, and one is that position of a technology integration specialist, and so I'll speak to that first. When we first began to write the initiative in Phase One of the Laptop Initiative with Sentry, we learned quickly in the research that a couple of things were important, and number one was the professional development. And all the research at that time had said you really need at least a year to roll out the professional development before putting the machines in the hands of, with students in the classroom with it. And we didn't have that time, so what we created in that document was what we felt was best fit in the timeframe that we did have to roll that out with. In that, we began with two FTEs for TIS, and we, in the initial proposal, decided to back off the FTEs as we progressed because we felt that we had done our professional development, and the teachers have grabbed on to it, and they'll, you know, go with it. And we've learned now here in the fifth year that really those rules were more important than we had kind of foreseen, as you have heard tonight. The survey that staff took earlier this year showed that three-fourths of staff do feel that that mentoring and coaching that those TIS personnel do provide is a big deal. SPAS is very fortunate at this time to have Liz Steele, and that is the only full-time TIS position we have in the district. Staff members at PJ's and Ben have their own staff providing that training. I share that position with Jeff Tepp at Ben Franklin, and then Jeff Melzner has helped this first semester with it. But we're also teachers, so our ability to get into the classroom and really to support them the way the feedback has been given to us over the last five years with this initiative is not feasible at the time, as much as we do accommodate, and I could certainly tell you stories about that as, if you would like. So that was nice to hear. It was also wonderful news to hear that finally elementary get their day to have this opportunity to have someone full-time with them to help them with the technology in the buildings because that's really quite important, as we have all realized over the five years. The second piece kind of goes along with the delivery of the professional development. And if you go back to the initial Phase One in the... Thank you. I couldn't think of the word. Thank you. They, we knew what our timeframe was, and so we developed what we felt was best for that, and we wanted to make sure we'd cover two things in that. One, that we made sure that we introduced the teachers to the machines, and they understood how they worked and what they were, how they work, so they can troubleshoot in their classrooms. And the second piece was to extend out the other technology attributes, components, software, web 2.0 tools, all of these things back five years ago that were available, that are still available now and maybe aren't as friendly to use compared to the new stuff that's out there now. Over this five-year cycle, I can tell you that we've learned as TIS a few things. One was that the teachers, while they may like the break of this idea of delivery in a sit-and-get model where I stand in front of you and share what this tool does, and you get the information, and then you get to walk out or whatever, because it's a nice break, we're not teaching, we're not talking, it's kind of nice. However, it's not necessarily turned around and then implemented into the classroom as easily as if we were to change that format. So the facility would provide us with the opportunity to be able to give them the space to see really how it's truly supposed to be implemented in the innovation that it's bringing to us. The other thing that we learned and we have adapted currently as TIS is that it's probably easiest, I am a science teacher, so it's very easy for me to bring forth science examples of how to use this technology. However, not so nice for, you know, a math teacher, a social studies teacher. So that was really the first feedback we got throughout the initiative was to make sure that we are presenting the material in a fashion that we are meeting their needs. And while over the five years, we have been able to improve what's available in all the classrooms, but they are very similar now in the classrooms, there are still better ways in which we can deliver that model as opposed to just sitting then in the desks. And that's what Mr. Melzner had kind of contributed to, the training rooms four and five, and how those are laid out and what those would look like. Yeah, so that was just a few things I wanted to share. I'm sure Mr. Casey will go over this picture a little bit better, but I just want to comment a couple of things on it. Number one, if you have not been to the CCIT at UWSP, you really should, you should go because the pictures don't do it justice at all. And I was able to walk in with Ms. Steele as she was using it for one of her trainings for staff at SPAS, who then came over here to the CCIT to be able to do the training. There's a piece in it that I wish I had in my classroom, and that was this idea of the pods, and there's six pods, four pods, I believe, within it, and the ability of what you can bring to that table and the collaboration that happens at those pods, I would just dream of as a teacher to have in my classroom. So hopefully, you can make it over there to see that because that would be an amazing thing to be able to have access to as a, here in the community, so, thanks.
I decided, I wasn't going to speak, but I decided to speak because an elementary teacher hasn't come up and said anything yet. So I teach third grade at Jefferson School, I've been in the district for nine years, I also taught first and fifth grade in those nine years, and I'm also a SPAS graduate, so I have a lot of pride to be part of this district. And when Brian came to me and showed me the idea of this technology center and elementary was part of it, I think that was what we were most excited about, was that finally we feel down in elementary that someone's hearing us and that we do need more things like this available to our teachers and our students. Sometimes we forget that little kids can also learn with technology, and they sometimes are better than us. And what, that's what I want to really talk about, needing that technology center and needing the professional development, is that our students know more than us right now, and we need to be a step ahead of them in some of these things. And we don't have the training for our teachers to be that step ahead. So when I look at the UWSP Technology Center that they have, I did take my class there as part of a grant, we work with the university, and some pre-service teachers taught my students at, right before Christmas time, using all of the things they had in there, and my students were so amazed. They came from Jefferson School, where we have a smartboard because of a grant, but we are the only classroom in my school that has one, and we have two iPads in our classroom, and I'm also piloting the Chromebooks, which we're going to possibly get with this proposal. And they were amazed at the other things that are out there as well. So I just wanted to talk to the fact that teachers need to be taught, a lot of our teachers aren't 21st century learners yet. I'm young enough that I feel like I'm at the cusp where I am, but we need to teach our teachers to be 21st century learners through this technology, and then we can take it to our students and teach them. So we need to be the learners first, so I just wanted to say that, so, thank you.
Okay, well, I'll try and wrap this up here. I know it's been a long time, there's a lot of passion and a lot of interest in what we've got to say here. So what is it that we're actually going to be talking about for rolling out for devices? For the elementary schools, our goal was to achieve a ratio of about one device per three students, one mobile cart per grade level per school. That would roughly be 500 Android tablets in grades K2, 500 Chromebooks in grades 3, 4, and 500 Chromebooks in grades 5 through 6. What's also very exciting about this, like I said, it's not just about the devices, we are adding in two full-time integration specialists dedicated to the elementary level. For the junior highs, we would like to achieve a ratio of one-to-one. It's not going to be a true one-to-one program where the students take home the devices in grades 7 through 8, but we will have enough devices in the school so that they, every student can have a device for every class. It says 100 Chromebooks per school, that may be adjusted later. Likewise, with a number for the reallocated laptops, there may be more coming into the second year, but that's what the first-year allocation would be. What's also exciting for the junior highs is they will have a full-time tech integration specialist. Currently, there are people like October that are serving in that capacity on a part-time basis, and they've been doing the best that they can, but actually having a full-time person will allow them to achieve a lot of things. We're also, the partnership will also fund one full-time technician to help support the laptops. For SPAS and the Alternative Center, we're going to continue the one-to-one laptop program, which means a laptop for every student to take home in grades 9 through 12. We're going to continue to fund the tech integration specialist and also continue to fund a technician at that level. Some additional elements to this plan, we're upgrading the network and the network infrastructure, I alluded that to that fact earlier. The eventual goal will be to have 10 gigabytes of capacity, and we can E-rate for discount on that in the upcoming budget years. We are piloting Bring Your Own Technology, hoping to do that at SPAS, and it is another way to get more bang for our buck and to give some flexibility for what type of devices we offer. We're piloting Chromebooks currently in the district, and the results have been fantastic. We're very confident about that device. There's planned pilots going on for Android tablets at the elementary level. We're also very interested in developing some community technology education. And finally, we are very interested in working with neighboring districts. We've heard a lot of things about neighboring districts wanting to possibly come and have tech training here in Point. We really have a chance to create something here that would be the envy of most districts around us. In fact, why should they send people to CISA V that's very far away when they could send people right here where we have a great cadre of well-trained people in the facilities to support that? Did you want to speak?
Yeah, just want to add this to what Brian indicated. We have monthly meetings of superintendents through CISA V, and I have a group of superintendents that I stay in touch with that surround us. Three of those superintendents have expressed an exceptionally strong interest in sending their teachers over to such a center on a per capita or per hour basis, which would create a revenue stream, and it would also allow our teachers to collaborate with their teachers. They probably, the three districts that expressed interest, a couple of them may surprise you, but they were, they were very interested such that they want to come over and take a look at the, is it CCIT at UWSP, and talk with us more about how that would work. They understand clearly that such a center is for all of our employees, not just the teachers. We have about 560 employees in addition to our teachers that we do need to train, and so the availability of the center would certainly be probably limited to them on a limited basis, but it's very critical that you know that those neighboring districts have expressed that strong interest.
Oh, yeah. In addition, Renee asked for a list of the folks who sit on the district technology steering committee. I'm sorry we didn't get these to you at the beginning of the meeting, but we'll distribute these. What is not on here, unless you indicated, whether they're a parent or a, it indicates where they work, if they're a teacher, staff member here, and then the other ones are parents or students.
So what are the next steps? Continue seeking staff feedback and input. I have spoken with the leadership team, the tech steering committee, and also plan on presenting this at both junior highs and also at SPAS so that we can get input from other staff members. We want to formalize the district Sentry partnership and then actually give them that proposal so that we can get that written up. We need to recruit and employ two FTE tech integration specialists. Currently, the district is employing two or funding two, partially through the grant, so we'd like to get two additional ones. Create professional development. Once we know what we can start planning for, what types, then we will get to work on that. Teachers would be the first priority with the goal of trying to get training in place before we deploy the devices. Approve a plan for a professional development center so that we have a place to do these trainings, and that's it. That brings me to the end of the presentation. So at this point, I guess I can answer any questions that you might have. Yes?
Questions coming from Brian. Bob?
Have you had a chance to look at leasing versus purchasing computers?
Yes, a lot of consideration for that. It doesn't make sense for this particular partnership, but for the district, yes, and it's, there's many options. That would be part of what I would consider a four-year plan for what the technology needs are for the district, but it doesn't involve the mobile devices for students to use. And there's great options out there.
Kim?
Do you have a backup plan if Jackson School is not available?
Well, if that's not available, then we just do what we've always done, which is the institute days and whatever else, and that's what we're doing right now. We're not going to be able to do anything different, so I would say, you know, we would try our best to do small differentiated, class-specific trainings, but I don't know where we would do those or how we would schedule them. We would try, we'd do our best.
So the, hopefully, the phases won't collapse if Jackson School, I mean, I'm for the partnership and all that, I just don't want to use Jackson School until we get all reports back, so that's the one reason that if I had to vote this down would be because of that. We need to look at our big studies that we're doing first, and I know you've heard it over and over, so, you know, other than that, it sounds really great. The cost, okay, and I have to just make sure I understand this, one of the teachers were talking about taking pods to their classroom, and then a little bit in the later, you know, here, we're going to have certain, and I'm so technology, way below everything, and I deal with it on a regular basis. so technology, way below everything, and I deal with it on a regular basis. You will have some in every school that they can use, basically, you know, they'd have to check out or schedule time for each classroom to have it, correct?
Well, that depends on the grade level. I mean, pretty much all the secondary students are going to have a device. The elementary teachers?
Elementary, yeah.
Yes.
Okay. So basically, in the old time, when my kids went to school, we had 10 computers in there. And they went to the library, 10 kids out of a 30-classroom went down there. And so they had, the teachers had to work together with it, which is really great. You're not talking about taking elementary or any of the students, any of them, to this technology place?
No.
And teach them there. It would just...
I'm not saying that could never happen if there was something really, you know, there was a chance to do a field trip or something, but the idea is not to use it for student instruction. Whether a charter school goes in or not, that's independent of our training needs.
Right. So basically, the technology place, school or whatever like that, would be more for our staff?
Yes.
Or other staff members if they would come in and use our facility?
Yes. I mean, I don't plan on banning, you know, the students from ever coming there or doing anything there, but that's not the intent, is to have classes for students there.
Move there. Thank you.
Yes.
Others? Renee?
Well, Bob had his hand.
Well, Bob's spoken, so let's see what the rest have.
Okay, I'm sorry.
No, that's fine. Then we'll, we'll come back.
Okay, I have a bunch of questions. What I would need to see is, I would like to see what other 560 employees need training. I mean, we have, we hire a variety of people, and I understand while training is helpful, I mean, really, what kind of training are you planning on offering? And I'd like to see a list.
Yeah, I have that. I just didn't include it in the presentation. As you know, it was a very, very long presentation, but that's been a major component of the tech steering committee is that there's a lot of frustration from the other employee groups that they have not had opportunities for training and their needs have been really neglected. So the, some of the clerical staff and other staff that are on the committee did a wonderful job putting together some of the list of their needs and the types of things that they would like to have done for them. So, yes, I can provide that.
Yeah, because I quite honestly can't visualize what that would be. So you need to paint a picture for me.
Gladly.
I would like to see the documents from Sentry Insurance. I think we've asked for that a number of times in terms of what the agreement is. So I'd like to see those documents or whatever.
Are you talking about the old agreement?
The new one.
There is no agreement yet. We've had negotiations, we've talked, and this is part of the process. So once we're done and the board approves it, we will write up a document, and then that will be sent to Sentry to formalize the partnership.
Well, I, you know, this is really broad. So I guess as a board member, I would just need a better plan. I'm just telling you what I need.
So would you like the draft of the proposal that's coming up?
Yeah, that would be helpful.
Okay.
And then I, what I heard, and I listened really carefully, is, what I heard is teachers want it in their classroom. And I did look over the survey that you did, and one of the key things that I didn't see in this survey, which I did see in the survey, which the Technology Steering Committee piloted and then executed in May of last year, was that it said that they liked to have it in their place, in their schools. So if you would let me finish, I know you're getting ready to take a breath. I also had the opportunity, when the state provided grant money to what is now the Dermatology Center of Wisconsin in the business community, I got to see that state-of-the-art facility. It was a building. It was beautiful. It had so much technology and it folded because it wasn't used. So when I look at life today and how fast technology is going, what I would suggest, because I'm following suit with some of these other people, that the board has been put on hold to making any major decisions because of all these studies. So I can't vote on this for next meeting, and if you make me, I'll have to vote no. But what I would encourage you to do is if you take $900 million that the business owners have so generously given, and I so appreciate what Cliff King had to say, and I know Skyward is building a brand-new building. So what about taking Skyward's old building and using that? Or what about using the old Ace Hardware, whatever, building across, kind of across from your building and putting some classrooms there? Because what I'd like to see, or taking the money and putting in one of the elementaries, in each elementary, taking a million dollars and making an ideal classroom with those pods that Ms. Penner mentioned that she'd like in her classroom, why not modeling in each building? And then you could provide the training. So I think this technology idea is fantastic, but I've said a number of occasions, when this keeps coming forward, is that if you look at businesses today, you do not see training centers. They're vacant because the technology is mobile. So I love the ideas, but I want to see some out-of-the-box thinking. Rent some space for three or four years because you're, you're going to not need it in the future. Invest in the people instead of having four, what are they called, TIS or whatever they're called? Hire six! You know, I'm all for the people. I'm all for getting these excellent educators. And I've talked to people on the steering committee, and they agree that if you have good trainers, they can go in on a daily basis and work with the teachers, they can work with the EAs, they can sit down with your secretaries. And one of the things that happens with technology is when you get to do it in your own classroom, it kind of sticks or it's applicable. One of the concerns I have is with the calendar. We have the school calendar that we've passed. And as a parent and as a board member, one of the things that I really don't like is I really don't like when you take the teacher out of the classroom during the school year. So, you know, take the money and pay the teachers extra and have them go for a week in the summer. They could do, you know, they could go to the different elementaries, to the junior highs, do the training that way. I mean, that's what I would like to see, and I'm not quite done yet. I mean, I'm all for technology, and I love this, but I cannot vote to take a school and spend a million dollars in it when I really don't believe that it'll work because I've already seen it happen in our community. And I don't think it's, technology isn't about the place. It's about, you know, why don't you make a model classroom in each one of the schools? And the other thing that just breaks my heart, I got to see, not to pick on Tiffany Randall, but I volunteered in her classroom. I saw an excellent teacher using technology in a fabulous way. And it was embarrassing to sit in her classroom and see the way that she had the technology kind of booby-trapped together to work. There are schools in our district that have smartboards, but they only like have four operating computers. I've talked to people at the public school. They got the same Sentry grant. And in the private school, the Stevens Point area public, or Catholic schools, they have smartboards and each teacher has a computer. They've done the Discovery Network or whatever, and they're using those smartboards and those computers every day. So I would invest in the technology. I'd pay the teachers some extra money, I'd train them this summer, and I'd make, if you want to invest in the infrastructure, I'd do it in our buildings where the teachers are learning. So I love the idea. I love that Sentry wants to donate to this community. I love that Cliff King is here and he's excited, and he's got other business people that are doing it. I just don't want to build an elephant. And I can't, as a board member, when I've asked people from the public to serve on four different task forces, wait, 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 and then we open up one of the options before the studies are done. So the timing just isn't right. And, you know, I don't mean to be negative or anything, but I just have to be honest with you. I love the work. I love the enthusiasm. I've gotten to see October Penner, how wonderful she is. I've seen Liz Steele. I've seen Jeff Millsna and Dave Grabsky. I've been to some of their, their technology, when they have, you know, you go to Culver's and you buy, and part of the money goes to the technology. We have fabulous educators that are using the technology right now. Others want to use it, but I don't think you need the building. I think you could do other things. And what I heard from the teachers is they want to have those expert teachers that know how to use the technology model them. So I think there's creative ways we could do it by keeping the teachers in their classroom and not pulling them out, especially when we already have a calendar set for next year. So I will stop now, but...
Okay. Well, I mean, you have some excellent points, and I would love to address those and, you know, give my explanation or... I guess when it comes to the survey, I was given today a Survey Monkey poll, I guess I would call it, that was done last year?
Okay, I would give it more credibility than that, but I understand that's where you're coming from.
Yeah.
It's too bad that someone didn't share it with you.
And I did get a chance to review it. It was created to collect feedback for the tech steering committee about a device selection night. And it really wasn't created to be a scientific survey instrument that would encompass professional development. There was a question on there about location, which to me, I guess, independent of all the other things you could ask about professional development, doesn't make sense. I guess I would like to have a lot more data about what types of trainings, and then, once you know what you'd want to train people on, go from there. Because if you say that you want something in your building, great, but how are you going to do small, independent workshops with two or three facilitators during the school day without cannibalizing instructional space?
How are you going to pull out those same teachers out of the classroom? We're going to pay for substitute teachers? It disrupts students' days, and now that we have RTI and we have inclusion, that's not good for kids. And I'm sitting here, what's best for kids?
Yeah, then that's not the intent, to pull teachers out of their classrooms on a regular basis, but even to offer these workshops, let's take a semester, for example, and you pull out 15 first-grade teachers from various schools, that would be one opportunity for the semester. Just to have four technology integration specialists organize some of those collaborative experiences and trainings.
But that, then you're looking at your survey results, which indicate they want something that's more frequent.
Yes.
One institute day, kind of like. And if you have an institute day when you invite them into a center, you can't get all the teachers into that center.
We're not talking about institute days. That would be actually a collaborative, what teachers want is they want...
They need to be in the building.
They would want time. And in order to give them time, we need to give them chunks of time that are meaningful where they actually can sit down and learn and develop and work on these lessons. So that's one of the intents of doing that. It's not to create, to pull teachers out on a regular basis, but be able to do that in a district with 500 teachers, you need the facilities to do it. You can't plant it in the schools, it won't work.
But everybody's talking about doing it at the grade level. So you, you pull the teachers into an elementary school that you've modeled this creative classroom, and you do it there.
Brian, let me, let me step in here just a little bit. I think we need to step back a little bit and see the forest as well as the trees. The Professional Development Training Center proposal is for 1,000 employees. It's not just for teachers, and that's really important to remember.
You have to show me then, Attila, what you're going to train them. I'm sorry. I know, but I just, he keeps saying that, but...
And for example, custodians have something called the MSDS, Material Safety Data Sheets. They come with every product that they use on floors, on walls, in bathrooms, in offices, et cetera. They have to, they have to know what is on those sheets. We also should provide training for our employees, custodians and maintenance folks, on all aspects of their responsibilities. Some of that can be done in simulations, some of that can be done through computers. In addition to that, we would want our custodians, as example, and maintenance folks to be skilled in various technologies that we don't even know are out there, that are out there but we don't know about. I talked with Lori Epstein about food service, and she is wild about the idea that getting the food service people together to look at things such as nutrition and how to do certain things, but doing it together as a group. Brian said that the steering committee has developed those, and we will get those to you. But I think you've stepped back for a moment, and you say, well, we're going to try to train 1,000 employees, not just once, but on an ongoing, regular basis. We don't, we don't have spaces in our schools to take a classroom and make a model or ideal classroom. We don't have that space. Even if the grade-level configuration committee, or the, I'm sorry, the larger task force takes the grade-level configuration committee, a recommendation, and establishes a recommendation that says we should have K5 elementaries, 6, 8 junior highs, 9, 12 senior high school, even in doing that, we wouldn't have the space necessary because we need the space in the elementary schools now, and that configuration would free up that space. I understand your rationale, Renee. I really do. Cliff and I had a brief conversation about that center that now is rented or owned by a dermatology company. This is, this is not the same thing. This is, this is for our 1,000 employees. I never heard anybody, as I asked questions about that center, say that that was for our district employees. And it's one of those things that, it's a, it's a major investment, but we have partners in the community who aren't just willing to commit dollars, but they're saying, as you heard Cliff tonight say, this is essential for moving us forward as a district. So we'll, we'll provide answers to your questions and your responses to your comments when we come back in January. And let me prick that balloon a little bit. I agree that we need to have the reports back from, the recommendation from that larger task force, because one of them, the grade-level configuration study, indicated that Jackson School may be one of the options to be pursued. Let me just tell you what, what that would do, and it's okay because it's just information. If we postponed the decision, which is the board's option certainly to do, until after the task force issues its recommendations, and let's assume for a moment that they don't recommend the use of Jackson, and we came back in late April, early May, and said, well, we want, we're looking now for approval for the center, it would simply delay the implementation of the K through 8 part of the partnership until second semester of next year. Because we're not going to deploy those devices until we have teachers trained. That was something that we committed to early on. It was not what was done in the first phase, and it proved to be something that, that I think has been said, that, that we would, we would do this differently. So if the board says, no, we're not ready to do that, we want to wait for the reports, that's okay. We can do that. And, and then we'll simply postpone that decision about when we deploy those devices to the kids until second semester.
I'm just talking geography, you know? You have said all along, and I have said all along, and other people have said all along, when you've gone through this path, that not Jackson, not tying up a school until we have the other stuff. And you have always said, well, we don't necessarily plan on doing Jackson, but that's the only option that we have seen.
That's because we looked at other options, Renee, and we didn't think that renting a facility on a temporary basis or buying another facility was good utilization of district funds. We're talking about something that's permanent. We're talking about something that is going to require ongoing professional development for our employees. If we don't, if we don't make a commitment to that concept, then we're hurting our employees. So the reason that we didn't bring forward the other option is because we looked at those. Now, again, if the board says, no, we're not ready to do that, that's okay. We're, we're perfectly ready to accept that, and it's all right.
Chris, you had a hand up?
Yeah, a couple of things, not necessarily about the facility, but when I was looking at the, the key technology goals, I just, I want to mention again, today at Martin Machinery, Ellen talked about what they're doing with students. Some of the students that he had worked with have never been out of Wisconsin. One had been to Minnesota once. And he took these students to Germany for two weeks. It was, it was a world education for them. They had no idea. And if you see the machinery that's in there, and what he talked about is what these students are doing. And he talked about all the things that are on your, your, your goal here. The collaboration, the communication, problem solving, the technology and the critical thinking. And he said, we have places, we have rooms, that we bring them in, we bring the students in, we bring the, the students who have been taught and gone to school, teaching those students. And there's all kinds of work together in a place that's, that's deemed just for that. And then they go out and do that. He's very, he was on the charter school. He's very much in favor of the expedientary learning. But if we talk about a world-class education, 40 years ago, okay, I'm really showing my age here, 40 years ago, I was a data processing manager. I was a programmer and a systems analyst. And I have to tell you, when you go out for a job today, and when I work on the iPad and a lot of the technology, I'm lost. I'm like a kid. And I can take a seven or eight-year-old kid, and they can maneuver and do whatever. We're moving forward, and I'm assuming, I could be wrong here... We're moving forward, and I'm assuming, I could be wrong here, but I'm assuming after hearing Cliff, and after talking to a couple of people at Sentry that I know, and a couple of other businesses, I am assuming that they're looking big picture, forward-thinking ahead of what that would mean, what a technology center would mean to our kids and to their workforce and to our district. And I'm assuming that they want to donate this money, they want to invest in this, because it's an investment in their future for our community. So, I'm not talking about that you can't have technology training in classrooms, but I think they're thinking forward ahead, that this is a much bigger picture for our community, for other communities, and, and for our parents. I just think it's, it's a positive, kind of a no-brainer. I mean, just a thought.
Jeff, for Jeff, any questions, comments for Brian?
Well, I just want to make a few comments. You know, first of all, we have some businesses in our community that I think a lot of companies would, would die for, and we have some great companies here. And these companies have identified a need that they have in our community, and they want to grow, and our community wants them to grow. And they have not only said that this is a good idea, but they've put up money. So, they put their money where their mouth is. It's something that they see of value to them. From the surveys, it sounds like our, the staff and the teachers are interested in additional And then I asked a question, I mean, if you're talking about classroom, classroom setting for technology as being obsolete, are you saying that the classroom teaching is obsolete? In which case, then we probably should be rethinking the way we educate our kids as well. I think there's an incredible opportunity here. As a former business owner, I, it was absolutely critical, important for us to continue to train our employees and our management. And even more so today, things are changing faster and faster. And we want to instill in our community, in our, in the children in our community, that education is lifelong, it doesn't, doesn't end when you leave school. And what a great way to do it, by, you know, showing that, you know, we're, we think that our staff are, all the employees of the school district need this training technology to be able to apply it in their class.
Jeff, did you have something?
Yes. First of all, I'd like to say to Sentry Foundation, thank you very much for your generous, generous support the last five years. We look forward to a long, prosperous relationship with you. Also, the donations of the local businesses who are willing to put up money, again, thank you very much. It shows that you support education in Stevens Point. That I'll say is thank you. However, it's no such thing as a free lunch. Saying that this cost of $918,000 is going to be cost neutral to the district is naive for the simple fact that we have two things going on. We have a facility study, and Bob can tell us if after, maybe we'll have X number of rooms, square footage available, once we do, if we adopt certain parts of that study. But secondly, once you open, reopen Jackson, there are certain fixed expenses that are associated with that building. You got to turn on the lights, you got to have somebody clean the place, you got to heat it, you got to cool it, you got to plow the snow, you got to have somebody there working, you got to have staff to oversee it. All of those things have costs. And it's not $10,000, it's not $50,000, it's hundreds of thousands of dollars. And I know that has been a stumbling block for this board as far as opening the expeditionary. Now, my question is, it begs the question, that we want to use half of it for a technology center, is one of the proposals, but the question is, we don't even know if the other half is large enough for the expeditionary school. So, now, do we pick one over the other, or are we able to pick both? Because if we pick, and I'm just kind of playing these scenarios out, if we picked both, now we put $2 million into Jackson, just to reopen it and utilize it, and we have technology resources that are not segregated from the students, or, I mean, by the plan, I don't know, maybe there's walls and doors and whatnot, we haven't seen anything as far as that goes. But again, if we wanted to grow the Jackson as far as the expeditionary part of it, we can't. We just lock down that part of the school and turning it into a technology center. That's the quandary that I see, first of all. The second one is, I've said this all along since we've done the Sentry one-on-one, is we need to put the money into our staff. Again, you could throw as much technology as you want to our staff, unless you take the time to teach them, I would agree with Renee, 6, 8, 12 positions to get our staff to where they need to be to utilize that technology. Now, here's the thing that I noticed in the survey, while I can appreciate that it was a professional survey, the one question that I have is, and then it's professional survey, this question, "I would like technology professional development, choose all that apply," and it has after-school, before-school, weekend, well, this is the one that we've cherry-picked to say, "Workday, off-site with a sub provided." That's the question, we say 68% of them, and this is why you should have. Now, the other survey that we've had says that, and this question was not asked professionally, is workday onsite with a sub as an option. Why would you want to take them out of their home buildings? Then you have the liability of them going to and from and off-site, you've got to pay them mileage, you've taken them, some of them halfway across the district for an hour, five hours, six hours, eight hours, whatever that potential session is. Back to what Renee was saying, in each individual school, if you take a whole grade out of our schools, there's got to be an extra classroom. We know that at our junior highs and our senior high, that there are computer rooms in those schools. We can remodel those to model these particular pods as learning centers. We already have that there on those three schools. So, it's, the question is, can we do that in our grade schools? I'd much rather have them and have those abilities to where it serves a dual purpose. Instead of saying, "Yeah, well, maybe they'll be able to go to Jackson for a field trip." Well, I'd rather have them do a field trip every day if they want, to go down and utilize those rooms and really create those juices that our local businesses want, and to provide them that environment that they can excel and provide that workforce that lives, works, and plays in Portage County. Putting it in a Jackson, it's not centrally located within our district, it's not easily accessible, it's, it's just not an option that I'm willing to look at. Again, back to the, I think is a concern of most of the board, we haven't seen the results of the studies. We don't know about grade realignment and whatnot. Now, I disagree as far as the trees and the forest analogy, for the simple fact that we've already said that we won't implement this technology until we actually teach them first. So, I don't think we're going to start first semester and throw them the technology or the devices, because we can't even get this, even if we started today on that technology center, it's not going to be ready until fall anyway. So, the saying that it's going to be delayed until second semester, it's going to anyway. We don't want to give them the devices until we give them the training. But the sooner that we look at an alternative and looking at our schools and getting those results of those other studies that we've done, the sooner that we can get going on this. Because I love the idea of technology in our schools. I think, I mean, it's not going away, it's just like rock and roll, it's here to stay. But we really need to focus on our, on our staff, our teachers, and the whole buy-in. The last thing I might have to say, and just because it's all about finances, we will be starting our budget process here pretty quick for the next year. That has always been a concern of mine also, is building into our budget that technology and the sustainability of that technology. We, as a board, have never, ever seen those numbers. We've kind of treated it as a redheaded stepchild, because we've gotten the Sentry dollars, the Sentry Foundation dollars. We need to see how that picture affects our finances within our district. While, yes, we have a healthy fund balance and that type of thing, as we're told, we were short, well, we were close, we had $2 million cushion, so we don't have any extra money to give. We need to figure out how that works within our budget, so that we have that sustainability. That's the other picture I want to see as part of accepting this money from Sentry Foundation, is we've said to Sentry, "We're going to do this. We're going to provide the funding to train our teachers. Okay, show me what it's going to cost. What's the realistic cost? Don't come to me in July and say, 'Oh, by the way, real cost to the district is $2.6 million for this following year.'" I want to see those now. I want to see the whole picture now, before we approve this type of thing.
Lisa?
Wow, a lot of what I had to say has been said, because it's just, it's kind of funny. The Wisconsin Learning Center, while it wasn't built for our teachers, it was built for the community. It was a partnership between the tech, the Business Council Foundation, and the university, and it was not utilized. We have a technology center over here, which is utilized sparingly by the community. We built one here in this facility, so many people didn't even know we had laptops here for it. We had state-of-the-art, and how many times was that used?
We don't have any laptops here for this?
No, we did when we originally built it, yes. I laugh because I think, okay, if, if we were back in the day where we had our workstations, you know, maybe this would make sense, you know? You don't want to haul around the workstation. But we have laptops, we have tablets, we, I mean, really? You know, we, we are as mobile as mobile can be, that's what it's all about, being mobile, and now we're going to, like, stick ourselves in this building? I look at the benefit to the community, like I said, that the Wisconsin Learning Center, you know, the businesses wanted it, the education wanted it, the government wanted it, but they didn't use it. You know, build it and they will come? Not so much. And, and we built, we wrote a grant with UWSP to build their facility there. We're, we're on that grant application. Why can't we use that? It's just comical, and then Bob tells us all these numbers as far as the utilization of our junior highs and high school, and we can't find a room there? How could we possibly be using the labs that we have now in secondary with all these workstations when all our kids have laptops?
The labs have been removed largely from SPAS, there aren't really, and there's a few labs that they use for, you know, specialized business classes and things.
And there's the proof in the pudding. You know, it's just, you know, and even if, even if we could go as far as to say, "Okay, we can't build the room at the elementary school, we don't have room for there." That, that doesn't justify opening Jackson. It just, I just, I hear, what I'm hearing is that we need hardware. We need the, when people talk technology, that's what I'm hearing, is technology. You need your iPads, you need your surfaces, you need your Chrome, whatever, you, you need that. You also need small numbers and training. So, and we may have 1,000 staff, we're not teaching them all at the same time. No, we're going to set a cap, hopefully nothing larger than 15 people. I'm hearing that we need more staff, which I'm 100% behind. The fact that we have operated on a skeleton crew this long is just, you know, wow. But we have so many technology issues at the buildings, and it's not our technology department's fault. You guys are incredibly understaffed. You guys do everything you can, but, I mean, really? We have, we have the structure. We, you know, let's be mobile here, let's, you know, think about this stuff. I just, to say that this isn't going to cost the district anything when we're getting a $418,000 Microsoft payout, or whatever you want to call it, well, that can be used for something else, just like the Life Skills Center. We get how much money back from Medicare from operating expenses, and instead of sending that back to reimburse operating expenses, we're making a capital expenditure, never even looked at the idea of what it's going to cost to maintain that. Like, Jeff, I mean, it's like, okay, let's just build it, we'll buy a car, we won't worry about the insurance, we won't worry about the maintenance, we won't worry about, I mean, to me, it's almost, I don't want to say laughable, but it's like, let's learn from our mistakes, let's, let's be mobile, let's use the buildings that we have. It's just like, yeah, so many of the things that have been shared, I couldn't agree with more.
Angel?
I wrote down a couple of things while people were talking. I genuinely don't have a firm opinion on this yet. I've listened to everything you've had to say, and I appreciate everything you've had to say. These would be my questions that have come up while everyone was sharing their thoughts. For instance, if we put a classroom in every elementary school, they'd have to be basically identical in order for the trainers to go from school to school to utilize them, or they wouldn't know how to use what's in that classroom. And then, for instance, if they had to be upgraded, we would have 12 buildings to upgrade instead of one. That was the one thought I had. Because they, you have, we couldn't just pick and choose who gets, who gets upgrades and who gets more. That was the one thing I thought of. If other people wanted to come and use it, one of the things Attila was talking about, other superintendents wanting to use our building, where would we put them? I mean, is there one that's going to be a little bit bigger and better, so other classroom teachers can come and use it, or would that be interfering with our kids' days by having people in and out of their buildings? That was a thought I had. The businesses, I think my question would be, and Cliff, I don't know if you have this answer, or if anyone else is watching, are you contributing to a technology center, or are you contributing to the advancement of technology in the district? That would be an important question to know. You know, are you completely behind this building, or are you behind, "Let's figure out how to make this work?" And I think the only thing I would say is, the 21st century learner's statement kind of struck me hard, mostly because I'm not, you know, I must have missed that probably by 10 years. Okay, maybe 15. But, but my kids are, and they all know a lot more than I know, all of them. And for instance, this, this Christmas is a good example, is we've always, we've been the, we're not going to, we're not doing it, we're not doing it, eh, guess what? For Christmas this year, we had two iPods, two tablets, and a laptop. You can't not keep moving forward, and they become affordable. It's just, you know, we threatened as a punishment in our house to remove the Wi-Fi. Ha ha, we're never taking it out. I mean, I hope my kids aren't watching there. It's, it's different, it's changing, it's changing very fast. And from the mom I was when my 20-year-old was 10, to the mom I am when my new 11-year-old is 11, I feel very differently about all of it. He's not getting a job if he doesn't get this stuff. Do I personally care what sort of environment or which classroom he lives in? I genuinely don't, but I would like it to be the most effective for this district and the smartest. I mean, there are a couple of things I heard that really have stuck with me, Cliff, what you said, I had not considered what you require to attract employees, and what big businesses require to attract employees to this district. We have a state-of-the-art technology center. That had just, that's nothing that had ever occurred to me before. It's not something that probably circulates in our family for why we would choose a district. But I can see a place like Skyward, a place like Travel Guard, a place like Sentry, wanting their children to be in a place that's a step ahead of everybody else. I think there are a lot of good questions on the table. I think they all deserve answers. I'm really grateful, Renee, that you asked us to be informed, so we don't have a decision to make, because I honestly couldn't make one right now with the questions that have been put forward, but I hope that we just think this through, make the best decision possible for this district. I think the one thing I keep hearing is, we all agree, we know technology is, we all better jump on board, and fast, so.
Bob, it's been a while.
Yeah, it's been a while.
Do you still remember?
Yeah. I just want to thank Sentry and Skyward and the business community for their continued support of our community, and this is a great example of their support. I fully support this technology program. Brian, you're the expert, so I have to go along with what your thoughts are. Brian, you're the expert, so I have to go along with what your thoughts are. And I'm sure you probably talk to Century and Skyward and getting some of their expertise to make this thing all come together properly. I support it fully. I would vote for the technology center tonight. My concern is the timing. I think we really need to wait for the task force to come back with the recommendations of our possible realignment of the district. It might come back and all of a sudden, Jackson is the place to put it. But there might be something else where it says, open Jackson as an elementary school and maybe use one of our older schools for the technologies in it. So, I guess the timing part is I would like to wait until after that task force, but I do fully support the program. Thank you.
I just have a quick question or comment if we do bring this back next meeting. I'm curious what sites you looked at and why they're not good for it. I mean, when I do pros and cons, I want to know what you looked at. Did you look at the professional building? We own that. What's in there? Can we do it? You know, what buildings did you look at renting, the ones we own? Give me a reason why you kicked them out of the decision-making. That would be, that would be something I'd like to see.
Go ahead, Brian.
I don't have that information. You know, the only building that the school district owns that's suitable right now that was presented to me was Jackson School. Would there be other possibilities? We could look into that, but it's a building that's owned by the school district, so I guess the idea of renting or buying property didn't seem to make sense when we own that.
Well, we own the professional building too, don't we?
But that, and that was what I was going to respond, Kim, in addition to what Brian said. We, the first thing that actually we looked at when we first talked about the technology plan prior to Brian coming along was, in fact, the Learning Center out by the Portage County Business Council. But at the time, we weren't, we weren't ready to make that recommendation to the board. In fact, Jerry Thrun and I, and I think Mary Jo and even John Volendorf, went over there and looked at that and thought about it, but we weren't, we didn't have all these other pieces in place. We didn't have the technology standards written. We didn't have the inventory done. We didn't have a technology plan at the time.
And just really sorry, because I wanted to make sure I understood you, Attila, because I wasn't talking about the building you're talking about.
Well, what I'm trying to answer your question is you asked what other places we looked at, okay?
Okay. Well, I thought you were discussing the professional building, and then you jumped to the other building. So, I just wanted to make sure I wasn't misunderstanding, so.
So, we weren't ready at the time. We did look at the professional building. It does not have the available space configured the way that we need it. We have renters in there, first of all. Secondly, it does not have the kinds of spaces that we would need. And you look at the plan, whether it's at Jackson or some other location, it has the space in terms of all-in-one area. The walls currently are movable walls, which would make a big difference in terms of being very flexible in the development that we provide to our staffs, that we could open up walls, provide larger group sessions versus smaller group ones. The professional building doesn't have that. So, we did look at that. We looked at the one site out by the Business Council, but we weren't ready at the time. And by the time we were ready, they had already rented it or sold it, whatever they did. And we looked, actually, we discussed the possibility of renting a available space in the community, of which there are many. But again, as I responded to Renee earlier, we're looking at something that's long-term for all of our employees, that's ongoing and continuous. And that would mean something that we currently have, a building, Jackson School, that we could convert to that. There have been a number of questions raised. We're going to come back with answers. There have been a number of ideas and comments made about some of the things that we're going to come back with responses to. And again, we don't have to come back on the 27th for approval. You've hired an administrative team that's trying to push the envelope. At times, we push pretty hard because we want to advance the district forward, and it's okay if the board says, "We're not ready." That's perfectly okay. And so, the boards, I've gotten a feel of the board for this. We're not ready to make that decision at the end of January. Angel herself has said that she couldn't decide. She's still sitting on the fence. We're going to come back with a lot more information over the next several months and see where the task force comes with its recommendations. And at that point, then make a recommendation. It's all part of the process. It's not personal. It's not meant to be emotional. It is very passionate, I think, on everybody's part, that we want to see professional development. We want to see it in the best way possible. We want to see our employees skilled, all of our employees, not just teachers, although they're our first priority. And we want to be able to sustain that once the center is up and running. And I just want to add one statement. The cost to the district to get the center open and up and running is zero. The ongoing costs are there. We all know that. But there are ways in which we've looked at already to mitigate some of those costs. But I can tell you, it's not in the hundreds of thousands of dollars per year. That, I can tell you. So, we'll come back with a lot more information and present it to the board.
Just one last thing. And Attila, I really would like to know, and Angel, you asked the question that I was going to ask, because my understanding was, talking to the business leaders, that their support was for a technology center. And I would like to know if that is the case. Is that the part of it? Because I think that's, I think from what I understood, their vision was that, not only for the school district, for their businesses, and for the community. So, if that isn't part of it, then we need to know.
We're going to, on the 27th, our intent was and remains to bring the business partners who have made a commitment forward here to the board and to have them talk with you directly and have you ask them questions about their commitment and why, and answer that question, which I thought was very well phrased.
I think that's great.
Yeah. I want to also thank our two teachers from our Technology Steering Committee. Thank Jeff and Liz also for doing that little thing. And Brian, thank you for all the work.
Yes, I just had a couple concluding remarks here. I mean, there was like 10, 12 questions I never got a chance to answer, and I'm not going to go into it now. But I think there are a couple important things to remember. We have a very unique opportunity here. There's not very many school districts that get handed a million dollars to pull something like this off. And I think it's an opportunity that we have, and we should very seriously consider doing this, because very few other districts would ever be able to do this. I do think it's the right thing to do. It's a great thing because we could do something different. If we don't do this, we'll go back to the way we were doing things before. We'll do institute days. We'll do the best we can. But if we do have this, we'll have a chance to do something great. The other thing is related to the technology in the classrooms, as part of this initiative, our goal is to have a device for every teacher in the district. Every teacher will have a mobile device. As far as upgrading classroom technology, that is a huge issue, and I'm working on, that's almost independent of this issue in terms of providing student devices. But we're living in a world where computers are outdated every 18 months. And the technology that we have now, we have to decide whether we want to invest funds in trying to keep that alive, whether we virtualize it, whether we lease equipment, buy refurbished equipment. We're considering all of those options. So, I just want to let you know that just because we're doing this with Century for students doesn't mean we're letting everything else go. We're still working on the technology needs for the district as well. And I thank you very much for the discussion. It was excellent, excellent questions and a great discussion.
Thanks, Emily.
Thank you, Brian.
Lisa, did you have?
I just, I was curious about the business participants. Are they assuming that they're also going to utilize the facility? Is that what I'm hearing, or possibly?
No. That was never part of the conversation with any business leader that we had. That the business, the business use of that is not. What Cliff meant when he said that it is an opportunity for businesses to utilize the Professional Development Center as a calling card or selling tool for, to attracting employees, was that those employees are parents. And for parents to know that their school district has a Professional Development Center to train teachers and have technology in the schools already, K through 12, is an incredible thing to put on the table to employees. And I see Cliff shaking his head. So, it was never that businesses would use it. They understand quite clearly, from all of the people that I've talked to, that this was a tech center that would be used for our district and for our employees, and the incredible need that we have to upgrade the skills of all of our employees on an ongoing, continuous basis, long-term.
Brian, thanks to you and your team for all the hard work and for the great presentation.
They're great people.
And we look forward to further information coming back. Folks, let's take a couple-minute break.
You know what? I have to leave at 10:00. Do you think we could vote on the next item? It's the elementary staffing request, and then I'm going to have to excuse myself.
Thanks, Renee. Keith and Bill?
Keel and Bill. Is it Keith? Okay.
Just here with the elementary staffing request. Since last fall, we've been monitoring the numbers at all of our buildings. And the one classroom that has become an issue for us is the 5th grade at Roosevelt. We started out the year right at the, at the board guidelines. Within a week or two of school, we'd bumped it up by one, and we were above the guidelines. We bumped it up by a couple more this fall. We kept adding EA time to try to address that need. And in the last week, in the last two weeks, we've had three more students move in, so we are now up to five students over the guidelines. We're at 65 students with two teachers, making us 33 and 32 in those classrooms. And I truly believe we've reached a point right now where we really need to push another teacher into that classroom for the second semester of the school year. So, our, what I'm asking and what Rob Greenwood and his staff are asking is that we would add a full-time teacher for the semester, so it's a .5 FTE for the year, to alleviate that class size issue we have at Roosevelt School in their 5th grade.
I'll go ahead and make the motion to approve an additional regular education teaching .5 at Roosevelt School for the second semester of the 2013-14 school year, per the rationale above. The teacher will be full-time for the second semester, and I want this followed closely for planning for next year for that 6th grade.
Okay. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Discussion?
Yes, I have discussion. I'd like to take a little historical journey on this, because I have had parents contacting me from the classroom. And what I'd like to point out to the public is that what people are attracted to are our schools and the teaching. And this particular grade level, grade 5, at Roosevelt Elementary, had three teachers. And one week before school started, in at least my eight years on the board, I've never seen a teacher pulled a week before school starts. So, then the class lists got all adjusted, and then as you so amply pointed out, the teaching numbers kept going up, and EA time was added. And I've had a number of the parents contact me, and I've also contacted Attila, mentioning all along that I worried about this. And one of the frustrations I have is that, and in a compensation study, which I'm not going to be able to stay, is we have some trust issues in our schools. And really, we should be listening to our teachers and our principal, and they should be advocating up, "We need more help." EA help is helpful, but you have different EAs coming in, and it's not what is best for kids. So, now you're adding a teacher, which is great. I asked about that way in the fall, you know, "Why did this teacher get moved?" And they got moved to McDill, which, when we looked at, "What are we going to do with pull-over waiting?", McDill didn't have any classrooms available. So, I shared with some of my friends, so we witnessed a miracle, because they added a teacher a week before school, and there wasn't any classroom when we asked earlier. So, it must be a miracle. And I'm being sarcastic, and I recognize that. And I don't mean to be disrespectful, but I'm upset, because now we're going to add a teacher. Are we going to get an experienced teacher? Are we going to get a teacher that's just out of school? That's not the best thing for kids. And if I were a parent, and my child got pulled out of one of those two classrooms to a new setting and had to adjust, I don't think that's in the best interest of kids. So, my heart is with the students and their parents and teachers, because that's what happens in the classroom. So, I think this is a great example of what we shouldn't repeat. So, when you're planning for next year, if you have these numbers, I think you need three teachers at the 6th grade. And I hope you listen to the teachers, and I hope that the principal is advocating on their behalf. EAs are awesome, but they're not teachers. So, I'm sorry to be on my soapbox, but that is what I am passionate about, is what happens in the classroom. I don't think this is an ideal situation. I'm voting for it, but I don't think it's ideal, and I'm really sorry it happened.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any other discussion? Barbara, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Evil?
Yes.
Backson? Yes. Mr. Larson?
Yes.
Mr. Presley?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Shively?
Absolutely.
Mr. Sherrick?
Yes.
Mr. Todd?
Yes.
Mr. Rothman?
Yes.
Renee, thank you.
Yep. I know that I'm excuse.
No, we know. Folks, let's take, let's try to hold the break to a couple of minutes if you can. All right. Everybody is back, although not in their assigned stanchions.
Stanchions. Sorry.
Sorry.
So, so many.
All right.
I put my head in it.
Our next item up is the approval of the employee wage increases 2011, 12, 12 and 13. And Sam Levin has asked to speak to that, followed by Glenn Rangel.
Sam Levin, 1600 Sherman Avenue, Stevens Point. I pride myself on being well versed, roving through the border. And even though the state statute does not say specifically not to do, take action in closed session, it does suggest that it's not a good idea, and any action should be taken in open session. I also pride myself on being somewhat intelligent, and this memorandum that you've got here, really, I don't understand it. The board authorized in a closed session that it would go ahead and it would approve this wage increase. It should have been done in open session. I mean, I stood election last year with five people that are on this board now, four elected and one appointed, who talked about transparency. And doing, taking action in closed session is not transparency. Secondly, it was approved by the board. Why you have to approve it again? And also, why is it that the superintendent went ahead and authorized it before the winter break if you haven't approved it? You know, we've had a lot of talk here about micromanagement. Maybe we ought to have some talk about mismanagement, because it makes no sense. You shouldn't be taking action in closed session other than to vote, to come back into open session to take action. If you took action in closed session and you approved it, why do you have to approve it again? And why was it authorized before it's approved, if you haven't approved it? I don't know. Maybe it's just me, but I don't think I'm that stupid.
Glenn Rangel?
Glenn Rangel, 1024 Brawley Street, Stevens Point. I guess I can't really say it better than Sam. It just didn't make sense to somebody who followed the same thing as the meeting. I guess the bigger concern is, I'm wondering what questions the board are going to ask. Because my concern is that this may be, it's closed session, so it's not going to be talked about. But the superintendent, after a closed-session meeting, in his report said, "Everybody's getting a raise." Yet, nobody knew about the raise. There was no discussion about a raise. It was never mentioned. Yet, he announced publicly in his superintendent statement that everybody, except for those who are unions, are going to get raises in the district. And I guess I'd have to ask, why, why are we hiding these things? I don't understand. I mean, it's the idea, it's like the school closings. Dr. Wernig, you have to have more faith in your staff. You put me in charge of 180 kids, yet you don't think I can start my car after eight hours? If we're bringing this forward, if you don't want to talk about it in public, then why are we talking about it? I mean, SBA is meeting in public. We're inviting people in to say, and listen, and hear whatever you want to hear about bargaining. We're willing to talk about it all in public. And I guess I just hope there's an explanation, because it's just the questions. I mean, as Sam mentioned, there's just, it doesn't make sense if it happened and it didn't happen. I mean, maybe it's just that you got better legal advice, and it said, "Well, you better do this just in case." Maybe something came in and said, "Just in case this wasn't legal, we covered it," but then say, "Okay, it's a mistake. We'll move forward." Maybe that's the issue. But just a clear statement, because this is, this is when we talk about morale, when you put things in front of people that aren't, they're not written away for clarity. There's real issues. Because that idea that people think, "Well, I don't like being made to feel..." Because that idea that people think, well, I don't like being made to feel like there's a smarter person in the room and something's being put over on us. And especially with the difficulties we've both had with bargaining. So we'd just like a true telling of what occurred and why we're doing this. And like I said, it might just be a legal issue or just an honest mistake. So I don't mean to imply anything further, but hopefully we'll find out. Thank you.
All right. Let's get the issue on the table. There's a recommendation, a motion to approve a half a percent increase in base wage for 2011, for the 2011-12 school year, and a 1.5% increase in base wage for 2012-13 school year, and a supplemental pay to be determined by the board for all employees except the SPAEA, AFSMI, and the Teamsters. Is there a motion to that effect?
So moved.
Second.
And moved and seconded. Discussion?
Yeah, I handed out, and Barb, could you put this out? The board received a memo from the superintendent just letting us see where the raises have been throughout the past years. And when I look at this and I see that the combined years for the last four years for the admin is 8.77, food service 4.5, EAs 3.5, food service managers 3.5, clerical 3, custodial maintenance 3, support services 3, teachers 2, and transportation 1. I look at the proposed .5% increase for a year and then a 1.5. I just find it very insulting to our staff that we even consider, we have given the highest-paid group in our district the highest raise. And while we, you know, are doing the whole pointing fingers and all of that, yes, there were some board members here that signed that agreement, that whether they agree that that was a good idea or not, it still happened. But two wrongs don't make a right. We need to treat these people fairly. And the whole closed session, I could not agree more. I show up to a presentation, I have people confronting me about an email that was sent to them, and it's closed-session stuff. Closed-session stuff is closed session. You're not allowed to put that out there. At least, that's what I was told. And I am under the impression that, okay, closed session, this has never proved to been open. This is completely unacceptable, completely unacceptable. So I don't know why this is here either. I don't know if we're covering our butts. I don't know what the story is. But this was wrong. And when you look at those numbers, I think it's an insult. We're having studies done right now. We have people that are way underpaid. So what, let's quick give them a raise on their old underpaid wage before we adjust It just, I can't tell you how much this upsets me. And as far as closed, is this even, I mean, if I shared closed-session information, which I've been accused a number of times by you, which I have never done, but you like to believe I do, but whatever. But this is very clear, you did. How do you respond to that?
The board wants to discuss it. I can, I can answer these questions, but I thought maybe you were going around the board before you turned to me.
Anyone else?
Oh, sorry, I have my hand up, but I guess I'll put it up higher. I know I'm short.
Sure.
I mean, the same thing is, I mean, there's been, people have been accused of letting out stuff that have been in closed session and have been asked to remove themselves from the board, because they've been accused of it. And they know darn right they do it. No paperwork to show it, no email to show it. I mean, again, I had emails, I had phone calls at the same workshop. You're kind of dumbfounded because you can't say nothing. Like, we didn't close and vote on it then? I mean, this, this is a violation, not only just the not trusting somebody that has 180 students that he's teaching, and I hope you're doing a great job, because we'll find out down the road, Glenn. You know, if you're not teaching them right, because you can't start your car, because it's cold. I mean, that's the same thing. I went to work. I'm a woman. I don't know how to start my car if it doesn't start. But I got a phone call that I can call somebody. I mean, and I really hate to say it, just idiotic things from somebody that has supposedly a good education. So, I mean, I just can't even vote on it, because it's just backwards.
Anyone else?
Okay. I want to address the document that was distributed to the board first. Just as a reminder, in the 9-10 school year, prior to my coming, each one of these groups had either a contract, a collective bargaining agreement, or an agreement which was legally binding between the district and the employee groups. To use that year as a comparison, and in addition, I'm sorry, before I go on, the MS group had an agreement which extended through June 30th of 2013. It was legally binding. Nobody could do anything about that, just as if any one of these groups had CBAs through that time period. To use the 9-10 school year and then the MS agreement through 2013 as a way of highlighting what employees received more or less than administration, I don't think it, it's, it's really not an argument that I think is going to get us anyplace. Secondly, Sam's question about, and Glenn Rindell's question about this particular issue. Let me first address the issue about closed session. The board did, in fact, vote in closed session to authorize these increases. It is perfectly legitimate to notify the employees that the board authorized that action. That's not revealing something in, from closed session that shouldn't be revealed. We're simply giving the employees, telling them what it is that the board acted on. Secondly, the answer to the question about why are we doing it in open is in the first sentence. The board is permitted to go into closed session to discuss wage increases for other employees as they affect unionized employees. So the board discussed at that time the Teamsters contract, which was up for negotiation, and also negotiations with the SPAEA. As a result of that discussion, which took place in closed session, that is, you're permitted to discuss employee wage increases as they affect unionized employee negotiations, you are permitted to vote upon that in closed session and to authorize that payment. And then you have to, in open session, approve it. So in a sense, it's a legal thing we need to do. But it's not a, as somebody said, a covering your whatever. It is really a step that's necessary to be taken. We did this when we did the supplemental pay for employees back in 2012. So it is something that legally we need to do, but it's also something legally that we were permitted to do, given the two statutes that I referenced. And so that's the answer.
All right, thank you. Any other questions or comments? Barb, can we do a roll call?
I have a question.
Oh, I'm sorry, Angel.
It's okay. Okay. This has all been explained to me recently, because people are very frustrated with this I'm not that new anymore. I'm about a year and a half in. And I'll be honest, I, when I leave closed session, I don't know what I can and can't say over this kind of thing. I mean, I would have assumed that I was not allowed to speak about this or what it was at all. So I guess my suggestion would be, if in the future, when we do something like this, can we just move into open session and do a vote right then and there, so that we know clearly what we can and can't share? Because I would not have, I assumed I wasn't allowed to talk about this.
Well, let me help you there a little. You're absolutely right, Angel. That would, that would be the prudent thing to do, would be to take that vote and open right away. And, you know, I'll take responsibility for not making that suggestion or saying that to the board or putting that on the agenda. As the superintendent, I am responsible for, not just authorized, but responsible for executing those things that the board has voted on. Therefore, I am permitted to tell people what it is that the board authorized. That's all that we did. If you, as a board member, you know, were to come out of closed session and discuss it before the actual execution took place, there might be some reason to question that. But I think the more important thing is what you said, which is, let's do it immediately after. So I'll take responsibility for that and make sure that it happens in that order. So thank you.
Barbara, roll call vote, please.
Ms. Backson?
Yes.
Mr. Larson?
Yes.
Mr. Presley?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Shurek?
No.
Ms. Todd?
No.
Ms. Reebok?
Yes.
Mr. Rothman?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right. Moving on to 9C, compensation reports, recommendations, and just to clarify, something that was said earlier, this is the action item that we agreed to make information only. So we're here for information and discussion and--
And we're breaking it up between the exempt and the non-exempt.
Correct.
Yes. So which one are we doing first?
Attila, it's got you and the leadership team.
Well, I'm going to ask Keith to help me out here. There is a document that the board received earlier, we put it at your places again, which was the October 16th presentation. That presentation actually didn't have a recommendation. Right. It had options that the board was to consider. Right. So Keith, do you want to talk about that a little bit? About that, the October, the non-exempt one? So we'll do the non-exempt one first.
So the session on October 16th, Charlie came in here, it was a board workshop, we didn't take action that evening. He was reporting on the non-exempt research that he had done, the comparisons, and he had asked three questions that evening for the board to consider. One was, what mixture did we want to use between public sector numbers and private sector numbers? Do we want to use 100% of one, 100% of the other, or some kind of blended? The second question was, at what level do we want to pay compared to that number then? Do we want to pay at average? Do we want to pay above average? Do we want to pay below average? And then the third question was, and how will people get pay increases in the future? So those were three questions that he had posed to the board for the board to contemplate, consider, and to provide feedback to him. And then he would write a non-exempt recommendation based on the board's input on those three pieces. That night, the board said, well, we really don't want to make that decision in isolation without looking at the exempt part also. So they said, let's put the non-exempt on hold, come back in a couple of months, which was December 19th. And that was the workshop that we just had a few weeks back.
So what actually, and the title of the memo is non-exempt and exempt. This actually is the exempt compensation report recommendations. It's not the non-exempt. So we still, the board still has to make decisions relative to Charlie's request that the board decide on those three items.
For the non-exempt.
Correct.
Correct. And then what you were just saying, these things fell out of the October, or excuse me, the--
The December one, right. So I apologize, the non-exempt should not be part of that title. This is really, truly only the exempt. We're going to come back to the board and have a discussion in January about the October 16th non-exempt and how to move forward with that. So there aren't any non-exempt recommendations here, but we'll come back at the end of January posing those questions that Charlie had.
Sure.
So we'd be glad to entertain questions about the exempt recommendations, understanding that this is not an action item tonight.
Questions on the proposed recommendations that we'll be acting on on the 27th?
I may be really stupid, but what is the recommendation?
That's just it, there is none.
There is none for non-exempt, but for the exempt, there is, there's four recommendations there.
So are we now talking about the memo? I mean, are we now on to exempt? Is that what you're telling me?
I indicated, well, if that's the pleasure of the board, is that we're going to come back at the end of January with the non-exempt options that Charlie Carlson provided in October, and have the board reach some decisions about moving forward with non-exempt pay plan. But tonight, this is the exempt compensation report recommendations with some modifications made to what Charlie recommended.
So we're ready to discuss?
Yeah.
Got it. Then Barb, am I accusing myself?
Okay, so back to my question, the 1 through 4 is the recommendation. Okay. 3 and 4, what does that have to do with compensation?
Can you show me the front of what you're--
Can we look these right out of Charlie's presentation at the workshop?
Pardon? Excuse me a second. Could you show me the front of what you're looking?
9C2.
Thank you.
Correct? Okay.
Thanks.
Okay. So I apologize. What, did you respond to my questions?
Yeah, so the, in the December 19th workshop, Charlie had a number of slides that he had gone through, information about the exempt staff. And he had spent a considerable amount of time talking about the focus groups that he had met with. So he met with 50 teachers, five or six board members, 30 administrators. And through those focus groups, he'd collected a number of pieces of feedback. Some of those included things like people didn't understand what kind of financial shape that the district was in. And so he had made recommendations throughout his presentation for things that we could fortify. So the connection, Kim, was that by enhancing things in 3 and 4, it will strengthen people's understanding of affordability for compensation. It'll improve communications, it'll improve upward and downward communications, both, you know, kind of both channels and so forth. So those were things that Charlie offered up to make the compensation implementation more robust.
Jeff, you had your hand up?
Well, I can appreciate that he found some deficiencies. Those are performance issues. Those are not compensation issues.
Oh, God, I thought it was just too late in the evening.
Compensation, I'm assuming, is we're looking at their salary, their salary schedules, their, you know, their job descriptions, the compensation, you know, any extra compensations that we give. To me, that's compensation. This, I would agree with, that we have some real challenges that internally we need to fix. But it has nothing to do with how much we pay them. Well, I guess, I mean, play this out, okay? So if we found all these deficiencies, so we should, I mean, and this is going to be sarcastic, we should decrease all our pays because they're not doing their job. I mean, that's what, I'm not getting this. How is this tied to compensation? It's all about performance. If you perform a job, this is what you're going to get paid. That's the whole point behind this, not to say, well, again, I, it's awesome that he found these things that we need to fix, but it has nothing to do with compensation.
I think that Keith answered that question. Number 3 and 4 don't have anything directly to do with compensation levels of employees. However, in his work, his focus groups, he identified these issues. I wouldn't refer to them personally as deficiencies. I would refer to them as ways in which we can improve communication and ultimately staff morale by doing these things. If the board chooses, they can select number 1 and 2 and address 3 and 4 at a later date or not at all. What we decided to do was put it together, because Charlie made those recommendations as part of his report, and we think that numbers 3 and 4 are that important that we included it. But if the board chooses to segregate them, no problem.
Jeff?
Just a response to that. But that's a responsibility of you, Attila, to make sure that your leadership team is performing at its best for our schools. It shouldn't, that's really not a board, I mean, it is a board issue, but it's not a board issue. That's an issue of every day running our school district. Whereas the compensation, I mean, if we're looking at the exempt and we're saying number 1 and 2, 2 it says cabinet will form teacher pay plan group, five teachers and five administrators. So you're telling me that five teachers and five administrators get to decide what the administrators make? Or that it's a fair plan? Or, I mean, I'm not getting it.
Yeah, I'll just add, you know, it's an interesting question that you posed, or a statement that you said about number 3 and 4 being my responsibility-- a statement that you said about number 3 and 4 being my responsibility. I think this is a good example of an absolute catch-22. Earlier in the meeting, I was asked, why did the administration proceed doing a parent and staff survey? Why didn't we come to the board with that? And I responded saying, we were doing our job, we were being proactive. Now, when we come forward to the board, saying that we'd like to have the board approve this because it was part of Charlie's recommendation, I'm told that, well, this is your job to do, don't bring it to the board. Honestly, I'm really in a position of sometimes not knowing what it is the board wants to do and doesn't want to do. So, again, we can remove 3 and 4, no problem, if that's the board's wish. Relative to number 2, Charlie's recommendation actually was to have three teachers and four administrators. We had a long discussion about this in Cabinet, and he brought it to the leadership team, 40 people, and said, what do you think about these recommendations? And their leadership team unanimously said, make it five teachers and five administrators, because we need to have that equity and show the teachers that we really clearly want to listen to them and not stack the deck. No, it's very clear from the recommendation. What the group is going to do is to, with Charlie, develop a teacher pay plan, didn't say administrator, it said teacher pay plan, and bring it back to the board for its consideration and approval or modification. It's really pretty simple. We want to involve our stakeholders, the ones that are obviously going to be involved in, or are going to be the recipient of whatever it is the pay plan is. We want to involve teachers, and the reason that we have five administrators on there is, I want to have the Director of Business Services involved because it involves money, I want to have the Director of Human Resources involved because it involves compensation for our employees, I want to have one administrator from the elementary, one from the junior high, and one from SPAS, and then we'll have teachers reflected in the same way. So, that's the answer.
Chris?
Carrie, I'm wondering, Bob, I know other board members may have something to say, but I'm wondering if we could each look at first, like, number 1 and 2, because this is going to be conversation, not voting on something, and see if we agree that that's something we want to do, and move on from there to the others. Just an idea.
Bob?
Yeah, I went through this and maybe I missed it, but one of the recommendations that Charlie had was to review and remedy any clear cases of internal inequity, and I didn't see that on, or maybe I missed it.
That's number...
Because that's something that we should do ASAP.
Number 1. It's number 1.
It's number 1.
Oh, way up there, okay. Small screen.
All right. Jeff?
So who is reviewing the administrators? Are we not reviewing the administrators' pay compensation?
The administration compensation has been determined by the board a year and a half ago. It was part of that longer discussion that we had earlier. And I don't have the exact wording in front of me, but it essentially says that the board will, the board will provide a set of dollars that the superintendent is to distribute based on performance, and each contract that each individual administrator has indicates the same thing. It indicates that increases will be based on performance. So, it's not a pay plan for administrators, it's based on, it's based on their performance. I don't have the document in front of me, Jeff, so I'd have to go back and get it and provide the verbiage for it. Keith, am I right about that?
Yeah, the board had approved ranges for each of the positions.
That's right.
So there's a minimum and a maximum, and then each individual contract, which, those started in 13...
Started July 1st of 2013.
13, so they just started, seven, eight months ago. Those say that at least a portion of an increase, there is no description for how increases would be given, other than to say a portion would be based on performance.
Right.
But teachers, the teacher pay system, that's, when Charlie was talking about, you know, are there kind of career categories, like you have a beginning teacher, and after three or four years, they become a professional, and then a mentor, and so on. So it's building that out, and looking at other districts, what other districts are doing, having our teachers talk to their teachers, you know, that sort of thing, and then making the recommendation to the board.
But he makes the recommendation on slide 23, that our pay is above the 75th percentile for most of our administration. So we're just supposed to ignore 23, and, I mean, I was under the impression at that December meeting, that we're looking at everything of all his recommendations, including the wages of our administration.
Well, I think at this point, what we're trying to do is to bite off what we can chew, and, again, the administrator compensation, by the way, he did the same comparison for teachers, and in the October presentation, he did the same comparison for other employee groups. So, the administration one, we actually purposely left out because, partially because of his report, and also because, as I stated, the individual contracts have in them a performance element to that. So, I think if we can, and I would encourage the board to take Chris's suggestion under advisement, that numbers 1 and 2, we had to focus on that in terms of the teacher pay plan, and if, want to just jettison 3 and 4, we'd be glad to take care of that one with the administrative leadership team, so the board can concentrate on 1 and 2.
Well, we're not taking act, Kim?
Well, yeah, we're not taking action, but I'm going to go back, and it's an exempt compensation, I guess I can ask it. So, we've been talking about the administration contracts, that each individual one now is going to be individualized as they come in, and is that stated that board will approve that as we hire someone?
Yes.
And they're all could be different?
Well, we, they, I mean, the board could make them...
But they're individual contracts, so...
Right, the board could do that. What we did instead, Kim, was we had contracts that, at the cabinet level, we had contracts at the 11-month employee administrators, and then 12-month employees. And those are, they have some modifications to them, but we would not recommend individualizing those contracts, except for salaries based on the ranges that the board has established.
Okay, but we're supposed to, they're still supposed to still come back to us?
They...
And approve to where, what levels they're in?
Well, let me give you an example. So, this year, we've posted and are going to recruit and recommend to the board employment of a Director of Elementary Education. So when that individual is identified, we'll come to the board with that individual's name, with a copy of the contract that that employee would receive, which would be an 11-month cabinet contract, and the board can approve it or not.
With a recommended salary within the...
Absolutely, absolutely.
I know we discussed this before, have we ever received those other memos that we approved before?
I'm sorry, Kim, which memos?
Of the other cabinet members that we supposedly approved?
Yes, you received a packet of information that the board did approve those.
And when did we receive that?
Two meetings ago, and, you received it when the board did not go into closed session to discuss those items, do you remember that meeting? It was a very short meeting, and in that packet...
Okay, I'll, yeah, thank you, I'll research that.
And Kim, maybe part of what you're asking, tonight, when the consent agenda and the staff hires, we included additional information that we hadn't included in the past, so for all those teachers, those were essentially the SPAS extra teaching loads, but we said, this person's a point 2, they have this certification, and they got paid this amount of money. I don't know if you noticed that tonight, that was...
Well, I was just looking for the ones that were different from the revised or whatever, but, okay.
But because those are individual administrator contracts, those will come before the board with the contract.
And I thought that's what we had agreed to.
Right.
So I will look for that past one to see how them got posted. However, I was also under the assumption, that's wording I want to use, that exempt, we're looking at all the exempt. We were not going to piecemeal this together, we are looking at all of our groups together, so it doesn't happen like it happened before. This group doesn't get anything, this group doesn't get anything, oh, this group, we're going to give a 0.5%, and this group, we're still going to fight with, that administration is going to get that annual 2%. Unacceptable to me.
But that's not the case, though.
It could be. If we're doing the administration last, oh, we got this kind of money, now we're going to give them guys a big raise, and everybody else is going to be, so it could be. It hasn't, it happened in the past, where everybody else, I know we had this stupid agreement, again, I didn't vote on that, so, but I think we need to bring everybody's unit together, this is what we're going to pay this group, this is paid over, and look at everybody's, so we're not pinning our staff against each other again. That's my recommendation.
Well, the board has already approved the ranges for all the administrative positions. You've already done that.
I know, and I think we need to go back and revisit that and relook at it.
And we will. Jeff's point about the administration, Charlie didn't make recommendations about the administrative salaries, but our intent was to, I'm sorry?
I swear he did. I've got notes here that we, the administration gets, is overpaid. On my notes that I pulled back, that he said that night, is that we need to look at administration, so it kind of all falls into play.
He didn't use the word "overpaid." What he said was that, if you look at the comparison, and Jeff read the slide, but that was true also for other employees. It was true for teachers, it was, it was true for custodial maintenance staff in the non-exempt part, and then he said that there were internal inequities, and he said that there were some employees that were under, that were under the comparison line. So, we can bring back the wage ranges for administration, we'd be glad to do that, if that's the board's wish, but his recommendations were 1 and 2, and we simply modified the committee structure to have more teachers on it, and equal to the number of administrators.
Oh, that's fine. I mean, I would like to see more teachers involved anyways, especially when it's going to be their pay. Granted, I can't go into my boss and say, hey, I want this pay, this is what I'm getting, but to work together is a great thing. As long as, I guess I have the floor, on A, 2A, if we want to do any action, we can't do this in a workshop. We can't have them bring it to the board for, in a workshop, because we can't take any action in a workshop. I would like it to be in a meeting, in a special meeting, that is taped. That would be my other recommendation, is doing all the exempt, all the non-exempt, do it together in one whole special meeting, that is taped and open to the public.
Other comments? Jeff?
The recommendation by the administration that they motioned to approve the non-exempt, I'm not making a motion, by the way, says, motion to approve the non-exempt and exempt employee compensation report recommendation as modified above, and direct the administration to implement the same.
And as I mentioned, Jeff, that was my mistake. The non-exempt should not be there.
At the end of the day, I'm not going to give any, I'm just, this is my point, I'm not going to give the administration, go ahead and run with it, and it doesn't come back to the board for approval. With this recommendation to approve, we're essentially telling the administration, put your groups together, run with it, implement it, board, we're done. I'm not done with this yet.
No, that is not what the recommendation says. The recommendation says to implement the committee structure, and they would come back to the board. This doesn't say just give the administration carte blanche. That's not, that's not true.
It depends on how you interpret it.
I guess I misread it. I apologize.
Well, if you read 2A, it says, this pay plan working group will make its recommendations to the board at a workshop in early March, date and time to be determined, and whether it's in a special meeting or a workshop.
We still have to approve it.
I think perhaps, because we are going to be looking at this again, oops, I touched the screen, and now I'm in trouble. We're going to be looking at this...
It says March.
Again next week, or in two weeks. Let's see if we can't get consensus. What I heard Jeff say earlier was, 1 and 2 on the recommendations are really board issues. 3 and 4 are internal management issues. If, can we all agree that when we look at this in two weeks, or four weeks, or whenever, we're going to be dealing with 1 and 2, administer, you know, Attila and the Cabinet and leadership team are going to deal with 3 and 4? Can we all agree to that?
Cool.
Can we reach consensus that way?
That's fine.
Cool. Let's, anything else before we move on?
But with the caveat, that this is going to be addressed.
What is going to be addressed?
3 and 4.
Of course.
Absolutely. And I agree with Charlie's recommendations that it needs to be. So, all right. We'll be back.
That's all I was going to say.
We will be, we will see this again, we will see 1 and 2 again. Maybe in 2, maybe in 4. All right. We're moving on to 9E. Sam, you wish to speak to 9E, one, approval of future agenda items?
Yeah. I actually, I don't know, do you want me to speak to the agenda, or do you want me to speak to the one about the length of the meetings, also at the same time? You can do them both if you want.
Do them both, can you do them in 3 minutes?
I'll give it a try.
Perfect.
Very quickly, on the approval of future agenda items, this is ridiculous. If a board member wants something on the agenda, put it on the agenda. Don't sit here and vote on it, so you can bring it back to vote on it later. You're wasting time, which goes into the second part about the length of board meetings. You cannot legislate the length of a meeting. You do that by the size of your agenda, and by tabling some of the stuff, you're going too far. You've got to sit down, and I know at the last, after the last election, you got rid of the committees, because they didn't work, is what was said. They weren't working right. They might not have been working right, but you weren't here for 6 hours. You need to bring back the committees, three of them in particular. You need to utilize the committees correctly, like we do in the county board, as Jeff knows, and then you're going to cut a lot of your time off your meetings. But when you bring the committees back, you have to change them. And I brought my proposal to the superintendent many months ago, nine people in the committee, three board members, two community members, a junior high student, a senior high student, a member from management, and a member from staff. Get all the stakeholders involved, get all the answers, and, the most important part, a quorum of the committee is over 50% of the committee, not over 50% of the board members. If you do that, you're giving the board members 2 votes, and that's not right. That's not the way the committee structure works. If you're, if everything is done correctly at the committee level, when you get to the board meeting and it's brought to the board, you shouldn't be, have to sit here for 45-minute presentations. You might have a few questions, you might have a presentation occasionally, you might have somebody wants to send something out for bid, we won't mention any names, but it'll go faster, it will, if you implement it right. And your three committees should be your finance, building finance, curriculum, and student achievement, and your, I forgot what the, the legislation and policy committee. Those are the three that you need to bring back. And I, when I said three board members on each committee, I'm including the president in there. If you don't want to do that, somebody's going to have to double up. But that's what you need to do. Get everybody involved, and move this thing along. It's ridiculous to sit here and argue about putting stuff on agendas when you're going to vote on it later on.
All right. Thank you, Sam. Reed, you wish to speak to B, C, and D?
Yeah, I was going to be a nice guy today. I offered the president that I do B, C, and D together, because I didn't think I needed 5 minutes for each one, okay? So what does he do? When he starts the meeting, he limits to 3. And that's why I did it, I figured he'd give 5 minutes, and unfortunately, you board members didn't say, hey, why don't you give them 5? But you all talked more than that, thanks a lot. So now I'm down to 3 to try to roll 3 together. Boy, there's a dandy one. Appointment of new legal counsel, $150,000, I believe, that we're budgeting. This guy's calling these attorneys all the time, and I know, I make a simple request for some emails, and this guy's got his attorney down there in Madison just writing letters like they're going out of style, okay? I mean, this has got to stop. And now it's one thing for her to give the superintendent her cellphone... And now it's one thing for her to give the superintendent her cellphone number, you know, but it's another thing that he feels comfortable to call her at, I don't know, at night, at board meetings. What the hell's going on here? It's just time for local, a local firm, a reduced budget of $25,000, and start using WASB attorneys. Limits, you know, okay, limits on the length of board meetings. It's just that poor Renee Shibley, you know, she left at 10 o'clock. The point being, let's find out if you can, you can cut them off. What I'm suggesting is you cut them off at 10 o'clock, and what you don't finish at 10, you do next week. You just go on and have the meeting. That'll force these guys, they won't run these marathon meetings anymore, because they know that if you don't finish it by 10, you're going to come the next following Monday. And you've done it before, because you hold these workshops, and that's okay. So, I think you can do it. But what I'm saying here is the way they're doing, I agree with you, they should, anybody asks to have something put on the agenda and shit, but they got to vote on it. So vote on all of these matters. Bob Larson, I believe, secure billing entries to electronic systems, to sign in alarms. Yeah! Put it on the agenda, start doing this stuff. Cripes! I mean, how long do we talk about this stuff before, you know, we're going to wait till somebody gets shot, or blown up? You've already had incidents. Public never hears about them. So come on. Put it on the agenda, the way they have it, that's the way they have it. That is not the right way, but do it. Put all these things, when somebody asks for something, boy, you better have a good reason why you'd vote down a board member's request to have something put on the agenda. But boy, that's what they like to do. So put them all on.
All right. Moving on to approval of future agenda items, policy for board packet changes. Lisa, I, the initials didn't transfer through, but I recall that was yours.
Yes. Before you start, can I just respond to something that Reed said?
Okay.
Okay. Reed, we don't have control of if it's three minutes or five minutes to the public. It's his decision. We went round and round with it. It's up to the president. We've tried to make the change, at least some of us on the board. It's not our call. That's why we don't say anything.
It's three to five, you could ask him.
We went round and round with him. It's his decision at the time of the beginning of the meeting.
Thank goodness he's not running.
So, I just want to let you know that, don't, yeah. Reed is going to stick with that. I apologize, Lisa.
Okay. The board packet changes, if there are last-minute changes, I still need to get the information. I still need a paper copy. And, and so, I know I got them this last time, which was great, but, and the other thing is, when we get board packet changes at the last minute, I have a full-time job, and it's really hard for me to take the time to review the material. I don't know if, when you guys set the agenda, if you guys can say, okay, if the information isn't ready on this date, it's taken off the agenda. I mean, Attila brought up the fact that he had five emails or whatever this weekend that he needed to respond to. And I get that, but I don't get the packet until Thursday night. I work all day Friday, which, you know, if I, you know, am able to fit some time in there, it's fine, but otherwise, I'm not. But the changes really, they just really are, I don't know, is there, does anybody else have a problem with getting them at the last minute?
The full-time workers.
Can I, can I just respond?
I have two jobs.
I just want to add.
Sure.
So, we, you requested that when there were not last-minute changes, but there were changes after the board packet went out on Thursday, that you receive a hard copy, which we did on Friday.
Correct.
Okay, that's not last minute. We responded to your request. Sometimes there is information, such as the elementary staffing report, or the request, that came about after the board packet was sent out, but we wanted to do that in order to begin the recruitment process for that teacher. In addition to that, we wanted to be sure you had the initial proposal for technology that was submitted to the board, or given to the board last spring, so that you had a complete set of information about technology. We delivered those on Friday afternoon to you and Kim, and then Barb sent it out electronically to the other board members, 24 hours, less than 24 hours later. I received five emails over the weekend, asking, some of those emails, I don't know whether there were two, three, four, all five of them, I don't have that memory, requesting information for tonight's board meeting, by board members. So, we provided you with the information on Friday that we felt you needed to have, but I was requested for information to have for tonight, prior to tonight, over the weekend.
So then maybe we need to change the cutoff date of when the packets go out? I mean, yes?
Go ahead, Jeff.
Well, here's the thing. The agendas are made on Monday, and decided, but if you want something on the, well, and this kind of goes to, as far as yours, as far as, you know, changes or whatever, you don't know if, so if you request an item on the agenda, and you get notified on a Thursday or Friday that you're going to be on the agenda, and if you want to submit anything, let me know now, because it's on Monday.
Well.
And we're going to ambush you, because that's just how it works.
Exactly.
And that kind of stuff, just, it's got to stop, because you made the agenda on Monday.
You knew on Monday. Just email me and say you're on the agenda.
Thank you.
You have till Wednesday, or whatever. Yes.
Go ahead.
This is, this is probably the most infuriating part of this job, at least as far as I've seen so far, because you have people saying they don't want the meetings long, so keep the agenda short. They want all the action items up front, they want all the presentations up front, they want everything up front. If you're going to put my thing on the agenda, make sure it's not past 7:00 PM, make sure it's not past 8:00 PM, make sure it's before this. It is virtually impossible to do this and make everybody happy. I'm sorry that it's frustrating when you get this stuff, but what we're trying to do in like this past week, schools closed on Monday and Tuesday, we didn't do the agenda till Wednesday, and everything got out by Thursday, and then I tried to make sure everything that got delivered was a hard copy, because that's what you would ask for. It just, it feels very accusatory, and it very well may or may not be, like we are the fools sitting here trying to make everyone not get what they need, but it's not the case at all. It's, it's who needs what, and what order should they be in, and when should we do it? And I, at least, don't sit and look at this and think, huh, I wonder what we should have on for the next time, at all. I look at it when Barb hands it to me, that when we sit down for agenda setting and say, "Okay, do we have time for this, this, and this?" Absolutely. How long do you think this presentation is? It's possible the whole agenda-setting thing needs to be overhauled? But I can tell you that we have tried very hard to accommodate everything that people have asked for in this, including keeping the meetings lower, putting other things first, getting rid of things that are unnecessary. We've revamped how we've done this so many times, I kind of feel like starting a little fire in the middle of this, saying, "All right, have at it then," because it's not easy to do. I mean, we genuinely have tried to respect everybody's requests in this. So, I am genuinely interested in what the idea is of how to expedite this better. I don't know if we need to have the agenda-setting a week earlier, but then there are going to be so many things that come up that needed to be on the agenda that weren't. I just, I don't know what to do anymore. So, I'm all ears.
Do what you've been doing. You're doing a good job.
Well, I'm going to, Kim, I'm going to jump in and just add, just add one comment. Those meetings, the agenda-setting meetings lately have been taking place five o'clock or so on Monday, generally the end of the workday, because some of us do work. And when we're dealing with an item that a board member wanted on the agenda, and the board has approved it, Angel and I split those up, and we're communicating with those folks either that evening or the next day. But we're trying very hard to do that. We're not trying to surprise anybody, and we're certainly not waiting and not informing them until Thursday evening or afternoon when the packet goes out. So, Kim?
What my suggestion, which I suggested before, is that when the agenda is set, Monday evening, Tuesday morning, we all get an email, saying, "This is the tentative agenda. We know it's going to change. We're not stupid. We can handle change. I mean, we come here and we've got 22 pages, and I'm supposed to go through them as I'm sitting here for three minutes prior to the game? Send us the agenda, so then we know if we have questions." I mean, again, I'm getting my packet Thursday night, work Friday. Friday night, I'm getting the revised, or whatever's going on. Saturday, I have family going on. So Sunday, I am, we're all requesting, I'm going to use the word crap from you, you know, and you're muddling through it on Monday, trying to figure out who can help you with it. We understand that we may get it then, but how can we make a good decision if we don't have time to look at the information? I would love that we could get the information a week ahead of time. We can do all of our stuff. Our meetings would be 15 minutes, and we'd be out of here. I mean, and who thinks, when we drop the committees, of eight-hour committees, that our meetings are not going to be long? I mean, really? There's no rationale to that. So, my suggestion would be, as soon as that agenda is set, it is a tentative agenda, this is what's going to be on it, watch for the revised one, and there's probably going to be three. But at least then we know what we need to ask, and you guys can let us know, oh no, that's been removed. So, but then you're prepared for the next time. So.
Jeff?
For the record, the items that I had on a closed session, I did not know they were going to be on the agenda until that agenda was posted, period. The last items that I've asked to be on the agenda, I've never, never received notification from anybody, other than Barb, when she sent out the packet. That's got to stop, because at the, we have taken the time to request that and have decided as a board, that it's okay to have that on the agenda. Every opportunity should be either, number one, to ask that board member, "What do you need to support this item?", or, number two, "Do you have the items to support it?", or a combination of both. We don't do that. And that's not a good cooperative effort to resolve issues or items that the board and the board members feel are important.
I really like Kim's idea. In addition to that, when you have these dates on here as board-approved, and you have them as tentative dates, is there a reason they just can't be the dates? And then, that's when we're on. I, I mean, that's, that's different from Kim's, oh, forgot, sorry. I mean, this is just another idea. But tonight, I wasn't notified that I was going to be on until I got the packet. I mean, so, however that ball got dropped, it got dropped. It's been dropped before.
What, what, what were you not notified of?
That tonight was going to be the policy for board packet changes.
We're not, we're not, what, what, all this, all item one, those five items, is for the board to decide?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Is this going on the, do you want to see this?
I'm sorry, no, it was my fault. I apologize. I was wrong.
So I guess basically what Barb's trying to say, what you need to speak up, Barb, is we're not supposed to be discussing this as deep as we are. We are supposed to be saying, "This is going on, this is not." You need to speak up.
And that was my fault, so I apologize, and you should have said something, Barb, because, yes.
She didn't have her hand up.
We've asked you that before, Barb, that if you know, we're kind of, you can say, "Ah, shut up and let's move on."
You got to raise your arm, hand, Barb.
Yeah. Basically, make the motion to add this. I think that's what you need to do.
I make a motion that this be put on the board agenda.
I think part of the discussion was important, because we've done this in the past, is that, when, my understanding was, is that when Terry turned to Lisa and said, "Lisa, you asked to have this put on the agenda," that the board member typically says, "Well, this is what it's about generally," so the board has some information about what to vote on.
Right. Okay. I'll second it. Not a hole.
Barb, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Larson?
Yes.
Mr. Presley?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Shurek?
Yes.
Ms. Totten?
Yes.
Mr. Evil?
Yes.
Ms. Backson?
Yes.
Mr. Rothman?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Limits on length of board meetings, and Lisa, I'm not sure.
Yes. You are right. You are right. I make a motion that we talk about the length of the board meetings.
Second.
Barb?
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Shurek?
Yes.
Ms. Totten?
Yes.
Mr. Evil?
Yes.
Ms. Backson?
Yes.
Mr. Larson?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Limits on length of board meetings, and Lisa, I'm not sure.
Yes. You are right. You are right. I make a motion that we talk about the length of the board meetings.
Second.
Barb?
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Shurek?
Yes.
Ms. Totten?
Yes.
Mr. Evil?
Yes.
Ms. Backson?
Yes.
Mr. Larson?
Yes.
Mr. Presley?
Yes.
Mr. Rothman?
Yes.
Motion carries.
The last two are, are Bob's. Can we take both of these together, or is that?
I think you can put them both together.
I think so, too. I did the whole group.
Is that your motion? Because I'm going to second it again.
Is it your motion?
That's my motion.
Okay. Because I believe anybody that wants it on agenda is going to get it on the agenda.
Can I, has it been seconded?
Yeah, she just seconded it.
She just did, okay.
These do need to be discussed. The safety and security team is coming to the board to make a presentation and rec, a set of recommendations with dollars attached, that is, with costs, Bob. These two are part of that.
When are they coming?
I think we scheduled them either the end of January or in February. I think, well, Steve, Steve Prokop was the, kind of the chair of that safety and security team.
Right, because we had some earlier numbers.
Right, and so they're coming back with a.
Revised, updated?
Yeah, right, and these are part of that.
Okay.
So.
So why don't we just wait till, and then put it on? That's fine.
That makes common sense, thank you.
Okay, so you're going to withdraw your motion.
Withdraw my motion and tie it in with, when they bring it together.
Will you?
Withdraw, yes, second.
Okay. All right, so we'll be looking at that on either the 27th or in Feb. Got it, thank you. Item E2, evaluation of the board secretary. Is there a motion to appoint a temporary committee as named above to develop the instrument and process to evaluate the board's, board's, board secretary's job performance? Sorry about that. Is there a motion?
No.
All right, thank you. Jeff, is there a second?
Second.
Chris, was that you?
It was me.
All right. Any discussion?
Yeah. I've read through this, and I don't actually see there's a need for a committee, other than adding a comments section. I mean, it looks pretty good. So I don't know if the other people that were going to be on the committee really think there's a need for it. I just don't. I think it's good the way it is. Just add comments.
Well, but there's more to the process than that, and there is no process. In the past, the board secretary was Gwen, who also, who was evaluated by Attila, because she also served as his administrative assistant. Barb doesn't have those responsibilities. We're it.
Okay.
And we really don't have a process. And that's, that's why the, when Angel and I worked on this, it was the recommendation that we try to, we create, we agree on a document and the process for how that evaluation would take place, similar to what we did with the superintendent.[1717.76]
Lisa, I would say if we all like it, it'd be a short meeting. And if we just want to add comments and just say, we like this, we like the way it's set up. I mean, I had one thing other than this that I would add or subtract or whatever, so I think we just make it shorten, whatever.
My only comment would be, keep it simple.
Yep. We will.
Not being a fan of unnecessary meetings, if everybody kind of feels like this is good, why don't you just email me and let me know, and I'll look at it and then... Ah, I just... That's four people?
You're having a subcommittee meeting out of the public's eye. You can't have them...
Got it.
Yep.
So this can't be at my house at the table either.
But you could do a regular meeting, if possible.
Sure.
Yeah.
Okay.
You could do it at six o'clock.
Actually, it could be at your house if you wanted it to be, as long as the public were invited in.
Awesome.
Bake a lot of cookies.
Uh, yeah. Angel?
It's been moved and seconded. Any other discussion? If not, Barb, let's vote.
Ms. Shurick?
Yes.
Ms. Totten?
Yes.
Mr. Evil?
Yes.
Ms. Faxon?
Yes.
Mr. Larson?
Yes.
Mr. Presley?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Rothman?
Yes.
Adult Crossing Guard Recognition, which is also an action item. Attila?
Memo self-explanatory.
Yep. Is there a motion to recognize with gratitude and appreciation the adult crossing guards who serve and provide safe journeys to and from school for our district students?
Second.
Discussion. Kim, you have a question?
And this is what they get? I mean, there's no meal, there's no nothing, that's just this?
No.
I just want to make sure.
No, we're...
Reed, this is a Board discussion, sir. Please don't make me ask you to leave.
Anyways, I apologize.
Yeah, we are going to do that. We are going to do what we've done in the past, which is have a... They, the bus, excuse me, the adult crossing guards want to go to the Golden Corral. That's their preferred choice of a luncheon, so all of the entities, including the district, share that cost. And then we bring them back here for dessert and a recognition by the police chiefs or their designees with a certificate. Last year, we had the school crossing card kids here, who also then presented them with something, so we're going to do that again.
Okay. And that's neat. Can you just, next time, put that in there?
We didn't put it...
You know, then with the meal and...
We didn't put it in there, Kim, because we hadn't talked with the other entities yet except one.
Okay. Well, then, maybe put possible or whatever.
We didn't want to give you misinformation.
Okay. I like that one.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? If not, Barb, roll call vote, please. That is an action item.
Wait a minute. So, I guess because we know that there's going to be more than what's on here, does the motion need to reflect that, so we're being upfront and open and transparent?
Could you just say, as it's been in the past?
I mean, do you know what I'm saying? I mean...
I think it would be fine.
Fine, yes.
We'll let them eat.
Mr. Evil?
Yes.
Ms. Faxon?
Yes.
Mr. Larson?
Yes.
Mr. Presley?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Shurick?
Yes.
Ms. Rothman?
Yes.
Moving on to item four. Consideration of Approval of WASBE Resolutions for the 2014 WASBE Delegate Assembly. There was a great deal of information included, which talked about not only, and I believe there were perhaps 14 items, but also the recommendation from WASBE and the rationale. And we need, as a Board, need to provide direction to our delegate, who we agreed was Mr. Evil. So, are there any of the WASBE recommendations that we have an issue with?
See, Administration looked at the, these resolutions, I think, last year. They did.
The typical process, Chris, is, thanks for raising that issue. The typical process has been that the administrative team meets with the delegate...
Right.
And we go through them, and we agree on what the Board, or the District, will support or not support.
Okay.
So, that's a long meeting that takes place typically, and that is yet to be arranged, but it will be.
And that's before the convention next week?
Yeah, it's before the convention.
Next Tuesday morning.
So we'll meet with you, Jeff.
Tuesday morning.
Any other questions or comments? That is an action item, Barb, so if you can do a roll call vote, then?
Do we have a motion?
Oh.
What?
Yes, we do. My computer's...
I can make a recommendation and simply authorize the Board delegate to meet with the Administration and determine which items the District will support.
So moved.
Second.
I can't make the motion.
I think Jeff did.
I did.
I'll second.
Barb, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Evil?
Yes.
Ms. Faxon?
Yes.
Mr. Larson?
Yes.
Mr. Presley?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Shurick?
Yes.
Ms. Totten?
Yes.
Ms. Rothman?
Yes.
Our future meeting dates for both January and our February dates, just a reminder for everybody, the Dr. Finowar Workshop is next Monday at 6:30. Albert, I apologize... Oh, wait a minute. I'm sorry, Kim?
Oh, just, have we set any meetings with the task force? The big thing that Bob's on?
Because we were all supposed to be...
The super task force?
Super duper one.
Have those meetings, any of those meetings been scheduled?
No, the information that I provided to the Board at the last meeting was that we would convene a meeting beginning in late January, so letters of invitation haven't gone out yet, but they will.
It won't be during our, when we're gone for our seminar? Okay, super. My next question is, is that workshop open to the public, correct?
Correct.
To the public.
What workshop?
Monday.
Monday.
Oh, that workshop.
Albert, you wish to speak to the Staff Morale Plan, which is a, or it'll be on the Board Agenda on the 10th of February?
Come on now. You should sit in the front, Albert. You should sit in the front there. You can just stand up.
I'm Albert Dracco, 1824 Gilkey Street, Stevens Point. Item 10C2 is the tentative date for the Staff Morale Plan to be taken up by the Board. It's scheduled for February 10th. On August 26th, 2013, you received the Draft Framework for District Morale Plan, a five-page memo. Since August 26th, there have been eight regular school board meetings. The long interval from August to February without taking the matter up raises a question of how much concern the Board has for staff morale. A related topic, probably some of you do not embrace the idea of unions with much enthusiasm, and perhaps do not associate union membership with staff morale. I gave the Board Secretary an article dealing with the Miracle of the Hudson, the airliner pilot of a Chesley Sully Sullenberger that ditched in the Hudson River with no loss of life. I suggest you read it and give it some thought. If the Board will allow it, I'm willing to read it aloud now, so that persons who watch the tape of this meeting will also hear it. It's a rather short article. May I?
Go for it. It's your call.
Okay.
If you all want it, go ahead and read.
"Who Says We Don't Need Unions," from the Hightower Lowdown, July 29, 2009. The National Transportation Safety Board has issued its official review of the Miracle on the Hudson. The US Airways flight in New York that struck a flock of geese lost all power and was forced to land in the Hudson River last January. The NTSB's analysis confirms what we learned from news reports at the time that Captain Chesley Sullenberger and the rest of the crew on Flight 1549 performed marvelously in the face of looming disaster, saving the lives of 150 horrified passengers by landing the jet intact and quickly evacuating it. Their performance has been hailed with such phrases as stoic, nearly flawless, and heroic. But another laudatory term should be applied to them as well: union. Practically everyone involved in averting disaster was a union-trained professional. Captain Sully himself is not only a member of the Airline Pilots Association, but also served on its National Governing Committee and is the Airline Pilot Association's former